Awesome.
Yeah, yeah, come on up, Jeff.
Greg Witherspoon? Okay. Alright. Sounds good to me.
I would have made it shorter.
Okay.
That was a ten with so many. We understand that you asked us to look at three options.
That's it?
And I'm gonna tell you what those three options.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna show up, you guys can just.
Yeah, that's it.
I would tell you that the mayor did ask about a ten year option. And we're like, did that ask us to do that? I try to go to different bars, to back bars, we are the bar.
Yeah, no, you're not.
You wanna look at that? We're gonna mind.
I don't. Yeah, I don't think she'll get much support for that one. He's on vacation.
No, 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 he was on his way back from Colorado.
No, see, he officially appointed Kelly as the finance director, and so he has to stay away.
Is that true? So he has to stay away long enough for that to be a balance?
Yep.
Yeah, I talked to him.
Yeah, he pulled.
He was on his way back. He was arranging about the Aspen leaves.
He, he pulled one of those, uh, do you really want me here tonight? Do I really need to come?
You think that's a good idea?
Are, are you comfortable with Kelly being there? And I'm like, are you comfortable with Kelly being there?
Our part of this is pretty vanilla. You ask for real debt runs, we ask your FA for the debt runs.
That's right, yeah. You know, and, uh, he said, well, I'm comfortable with Kelly being there. I said, so am I. I already talked to her this morning.
Throw, you're not gonna throw, you're gonna shove your.
I said.
No, tonight's. Michael got to spend, my son, he had spent some time, he was at the fishing mound.
Oh, yeah.
He is, he'll be watching us, he's way plugged into all this stuff.
Yeah. No, I thought he had a good time.
They were very impressed. They were like.
Say what?
Trying to the mayor. But he got, he enjoyed getting a chance to meet his buddy. See you when you're not sitting up in the picture.
Yeah.
Get a chance to talk.
Sure. I don't know, no, that's, I, it looked like he was enjoying himself.
He, he was. I'm not sure he's cut out for local government, cause he's. He's very.
Yeah.
You're welcome, no big deal.
Politician, there's no, it's very black and white. I'm not sure he can handle the nuance, it's associated with local government. But he's smart with all of it, so.
And I was giving him his little three, just scaring him. That's, that was what I was telling my consultants, about him. How bright he is, that, you know, if he sticks with it, he'll get real good places and. They were all joking around, said, yeah, Michael's over there for everything he say, recommending a financial advisor.
Just to understand with certainty, he comes home and tells me anything he can think of. I get to peek behind the curtain every now and again.
How are we doing, Michelle?
This was first.
Your mic's not on.
Yeah, this guy, the rate study, and then we're doing the LLC.
With all that crap going on up there.
Nice.
Oh, really?
Oh, there's a hurricane.
Oh, yeah.
On seventy-five?
Going up to Gainesville.
I'm making that run on Saturday.
I know. There's these towns, complete towns underneath six feet of water.
Yeah, I'm going all the way up there on Friday. Driving a camper all the way down to Gainesville.
I've got a cousin. They found his car yesterday. So it's kind of alright.
Oh, I don't know.
We actually sent staff from small town Mississippi, once here, entire staff just fled.
From them, we're driving.
So we were like issuing permits, helping them get their stuff back. I told, I told my wife, I said, if that call comes out for East Inseas.
That's right.
It's a catch, it wasn't, uh, so, hell.
Oh, Florida game in Gainesville.
I'm honest, my, my statement, yeah, she has power.
Hotel rooms were very inexpensive. About two nights' stay.
As soon as we got.
I don't know if it's a game day. Yeah, it was more east of more. And then they ran up the mountain chain.
What's up?
But, yeah. At twenty-six, we went to Johnson City, it's completely shut, washed out.
They said, it's gonna, they said, we try to use it, come to, go across now. It's gonna take a turn. Are you kidding me? I've never seen one do that.
Entire bridges just.
Okay, so it is five-thirty, uh, we'll go ahead and get this work session started. First up is a public comment, if we have anybody in the room that cares to comment. Seeing nobody jumping up out of their seat, running through the lecture, I'm gonna say that's no, we will close public comment. Next up, we have stormwater systems, water and sewer utility system rate study. Mr. Cobb?
Hi, thank you Deputy Mayor, this is a request for council to, uh, well, on July twenty-ninth, you did a work session, and we presented the findings of the, the first analysis of the utility rate study. And at that work session, you directed us to look at a debt financing option for both stormwater, as well as water sewer reuse utilities. And you asked us to look at doing financing over fifteen, twenty, and thirty years. And so our, uh, our financial advisors from Will Dan Financial, Ms. Tara Hollis and Mr. Jeff McGarvey, are here tonight to give you that update on the information, on the findings that they have found. They met with our other financial advisor, Hilltop Securities, got the information as far as financing from them, loaded it into the models, and so they're here to present their findings. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Hollis.
Thank you, Tara Hollis with Will Dan. Alright, we're gonna start with the stormwater, and we've already provided a lot of the other information on the, you know, revenues, expenses, those type of things, and so we're not making any changes to that. This is really just looking at running those three debt scenarios, and then the impact of what, what a potential impact would be on the rates. Uh, and so I'm gonna start with the stormwater. Uh, so we're going to assume that you're gonna have, is it, giving you feedback, or?
Somebody.
This closer to me?
Pull it closer to you.
Sorry. Is that better?
Bring it down.
Alright, better? Okay. So we're going, the, the assumption that was made, and in talking with your financial advisor, Hilltop, uh, that we're gonna assume currently that the debt covenants that you currently have with your existing debt, those are gonna remain the same with any new debt that you would take out. Um, so that means it's a combined pledge for your water, sewer reclaimed, and your stormwater revenues. Um, so these all assume that combined pledge. Uh, on the stormwater side, uh, because, as we've discussed before, you currently have minimal reserves on the stormwater side. Uh, so we're looking at taking out initially some, looking at you taking out initially short-term debt, uh, starting to take that out as soon as possible, so that you can start funding the capital improvement plan. Uh, that short-term would be interest-only payments for, of the outstanding principal, and we're assuming a five percent annual interest rate. Uh, and then you would refinance that with long-term debt, uh, that would start in the first quarter of fiscal year twenty-twenty-seven. Uh, and that would be taken out at the same time that you would need to take out some water and sewer debt, uh, for those projects. So you would refinance the short-term, plus borrow an additional eight million to continue the CIP that you currently have. Uh, and the information that your FA provided us right now, uh, so all of these three runs are gonna be principal and interest payments at a five-and-a-half percent annual, annual interest rate. That could change, uh, we've, we've put the conservative side in, uh, but that would potentially change as you take out the debt in fiscal year twenty-twenty-seven. Uh, and then thereafter, the remaining CIP, uh, for fiscal year twenty-twenty-nine through fiscal year twenty-thirty-three, would be paid with cash, so you would be building up enough so that you could start funding it as a pay-as-you-go for that remaining CIP. As has been mentioned, and I'll just say it again, cause we have to, because we're not your financial advisor or municipal advisor, is the debt service assumptions have been provided by Hilltop Securities, so throughout the remainder of this presentation. So for the, the three, um, the fifteen, the twenty, and the thirty-year maturity, uh, this slide is showing you, you're basically borrowing the same amount, uh, so it's, it's just the interest and the number of years you're having to pay interest. Uh, so the difference between, uh, the, the fifteen-year combined principal and interest is approximately twenty-three point four, twenty-three point five million. Uh, if you finance it over twenty years, it's twenty-six point three million, and then if you finance it over thirty years, you can just see that interest keeps growing, cause you're paying it for more years, it would be thirty-three million that you'd have to repay back. So what does that do to rate adjustments? Uh, again, the first one, any one is gonna be your fifteen-year, middle is your twenty-year, uh, the, the, the third column, any twenty is gonna be your thirty-year. Uh, so you've already looked at adopting a two-year, two percent rate increase October first. So we've already shown that going in place, that's your typical, uh, the minimum for inflation. Uh, so we'd look at, uh, taking out and doing an additional increase this fiscal year, which would be February first, twenty-twenty-five. Uh, and then the remainder of the increases are gonna occur on October first of each fiscal year. Uh, so you can see there'd be one in twenty, uh, February first, twenty-twenty-five, again on October first, and then it would say October first, the remainder of the period. Uh, and so your difference is about two-and-a-half percent between, uh, when we start those first couple of years, because we're trying to get, um, to pay back that larger principal payment that's gonna come if you do a fifteen-year, or you do a twenty-year, um, until you get the cash up to where it needs to be. So we start with, uh, the fifteen-year would take two twenty-five percent rate increases, uh, and these are including inflation. Uh, then that would, again, they all drop down to the same thereafter, uh, the fifteen, uh, and then a twelve, and then a ten for the last, um, the, the remaining three years in this ten-year projection. However, we will note, you typically go back at five years and check where everything is. So while we're showing this, you would re, readjust that, um, if anything's different at the five-year mark. Uh, if you do a twenty-year maturity, you're looking at twenty-two-and-a-half percent rate increase, uh, for the first two years. If you're doing a thirty-year maturity and taking out thirty-year debt, you'd look at a twenty percent. What does that mean? This is what shows you what the impact on the rates would be. So you're going, your rates are currently per, this is per ERC, so this is per home, remember commercial is multiple ERCs. Um, you're looking at right now, your rates, uh, for this fiscal year is eleven-seventy-two. Um, you can see that first increase would go to fourteen-sixty-five for a fifteen-year, um, and then if you do the thirty-year, it's fourteen oh six. So it's a minor, it's about sixty cents difference a month, uh, between the two. Uh, as you get out towards the end.
The first year.
That first year, yes.
Right.
That continues the second year, because you're doing another twenty-five percent versus twenty-two-and-a-half versus twenty. So the, you can see the, in the second year, so October first, you'd look at, um, under fifteen-year maturity, eighteen dollars and thirty-one cents. Uh, then seventeen fifty-nine, sorry, I can't read that very well on there, and then sixteen eighty-seven if you're doing a thirty-year maturity. Uh, and again, thereafter, the rate adjustments, the percentage adjustments are the same, it's just because you're going off of a slightly higher rate, that you can see the rates, um, are different as you move forward.
And what happens to the rates after the fifteen years? What would we, would we plateau off, do we come back down?
Choice to be made, I mean, you, you, we would, if, like Tara was saying, you guys review this every five years. If there's an opportunity to lower rates, then you guys can make that decision. But typically, your CIP's gonna backfill, and you're gonna have future needs, but that's yet to be seen. You won't know that.
Yeah.
And you'd continue to potentially do your C, your CIP increase that you've been doing, so, and that is embedded in these already. So we're assuming that that, this is accounting for the debt service and inflation.
And one of the goals that you folks had too, was to be, try to be cash-funded. So, you know, this may set you up to that unless something extraordinary happens. Unless there's some extraordinary need, unforeseen need in the future, this may set you up for that.
Okay.
And then this just shows you a typical comparison, uh, some of the communities, we knew they were ad, uh, adjusting their rates as of October first, so anyone that had posted that, or we had found that information, we're showing on October first, the rest would be, we verified as of August first. So you can see your existing eleven-seventy-two, you can see what the three, depending on a fifteen, twenty, or thirty-year, would be at February first, twenty-twenty-five. Uh, the average is approximately eleven-seventeen per ERC, uh, and then you can see, you know, the different communities around you, what their rates are. Some we know, like Delaind and South Daytona have adjusted theirs, City of Orlando adjusted theirs effective October first, and Deltona. Uh, others maybe, but those are the ones we know for sure were adjusting them as of October first. So you're still in line with what other communities, uh, the ones that have done recent studies are at the higher end, honestly, on there. Uh, some that haven't adjusted as recently are at the lower end.
Is this only the ones that were adjusted, or is this, or that are gonna be adjusted, or is this all, all of them? I mean, does, what's like Winter Springs and Lake Mary and Longwood, that, do you have any of them, the rest of the Seminole County cities?
I still don't have Winter Springs on here right now, I think they were in the middle of potentially updating theirs.
We, we can certainly run.
Yeah, I can show you.
These are the, the Ray Compton, we've always had, we used it for research study and such. We can run whatever you want, but we always caution you that this really has nothing to do with you.
Right.
Your, your revenue requirements are your revenue requirements, so.
Yeah.
On the ERCs, uh, they're not all defined as the same thing as well, so this can't be exactly an apples-to-apples situation, right?
Yes, cause everybody has a different allowance for. Typically, single-family is, although there are most, there are communities that tier their, their single-family residential, um, so they could have, you know, different square footage allowances, but they do each have a square footage allowance typically.
I know the people in Winter Park, who have done some comparisons, but that spot in particular, and theirs is, is like, I, I gotta do air quote feels like double what ours currently is, but I'm looking at this, and it's looking not like double, so something of the ERCs has to be different.
Right, theirs has different depending on the square footage. So on this one, the one that was selected was the one that was closer, closest to your allowance, which was yours, is like twenty-four.
Yeah.
A little over twenty-four hundred square foot, so we, we picked a, a Winter Park one that was that, in that similar range for the impervious area square footage.
But that would make it kinda hard, like for Longwood, or some of the other ones you were asking about, for us to know that that would be apples-to-apples as well.
But we're happy, if you, there's other comps you wanna see, we're happy to do that for you.
No, that's, that's fine.
Right.
This is really just information.
Right.
At the end of the day, you know, it's, you guys know what it costs to run your system, so.
Okay.
That's on the stormwater side.
Any, any questions before we move on?
No.
Okay.
So, similar analysis was done on the water and sewer side. Again, we're assuming the combined coverage requirements, so that would mean all of your water, sewer reclaimed water and stormwater revenues would be pledged, uh, for the debt that's taken out as a combined pledge. Uh, what we're looking at here, again, that this would be taken out in twenty-twenty-seven, uh, with your first actual payment being due October first, um, of twenty-twenty-seven, so this one would be taken out in October of twenty-twenty-six, which is the beginning of fiscal year twenty-twenty-seven. The principal portion for the water and sewer would be approximately fifty-eight point six million, um, again, the same five-and-a-half percent annual interest rate. Uh, and then the other point to note here is, uh, we did also look at modifying the rates for the sewer system to make it a combined, uh, a single rate. Right now, you have two separate rates for the Alafoia and the Oviedo system, and so we're still, these comparisons that we're showing you, assume that that consolidation into a single, uh, base charge and a single gallonage rate for sewer would occur in February.
Tara, I was also gonna point out that the five-and-a-half percent, your, your Hilltop folks put a fifty basis point cushion in there. We, we don't know what the rate will actually be when you go to market, so they will just be conservative, that rate will change, hopefully for the better. But that is the best information they had at the time.
So again, similar to the other, we're showing, obviously, this one is a larger principal amount, so the differential between the fifteen-year and the thirty-year maturity, uh, in total principal and interest payments, there's a much greater difference. Uh, seventy-eight million, almost seventy-eight point five for a fifteen-year maturity is what you would have to pay back. Um, eighty-eight million for the twenty-year, and then a hu- hundred-and-ten point five million for the thirty-year. So again, looking, the, the principal and interest combined payments are very similar, um, obviously, they're, they're slightly higher, um, the fifteen-year versus the thirty-year, uh, but you can see, this one is even a narrower differential in the overall rate. Um, you did implement, or look at implementing a three-point-two-seven percent as October first, twenty-twenty-four. Uh, and that was for your, your adjustment that goes through as, uh, the C, the consumer price index adjustment. So, again, to be consistent, we would look at doing an increase on February first, uh, twenty-twenty-five. Depending on the maturity, the fifteen, twenty, or thirty-year maturity, uh, the twenty, the fifteen-year, excuse me, would require approximately a nine percent increase. Uh, the twenty-year maturity would be eight-and-a-half, and the thirty-year maturity would be eight. Uh, that stays for the first few years, and that's getting you through the principal, the first principal and interest payments, as well as, um, as the plant comes online, that, or the new improvements come online, you will have, uh, some increase in operating expenses, and then that starts leveling out, uh, so that, we're anticipating the nine, eight-and-a-half, or eight percent going through fiscal year twenty-twenty-nine, um, and then being able to drop those down to six, five-and-a-half, and five percent thereafter, as long as inflation stays similar to what it is currently at. So if inflation does go crazy, those increases would potentially, um, change. This is assuming, you know, a four-to-four-and-a-half inflationary rate in there. So the same, showing you. Uh, this is showing what a typical water and sewer monthly bill would be. Uh, this is again, showing the consolidated rate, so I've just shown you for the Alafoia system, just to see what that would be, um, and using approximately eight thousand gallons, uh, of usage per month. So this is just a water sewer bill, it doesn't have irrigation or anything else on it. Uh, but currently, you're at one-twenty-three forty-six. Uh, that would increase, um, you can see it, February first, that would go up to one-twenty-nine sixty-three, uh, under the fifteen-year, which is the nine percent increase. Um, why that's slightly less than nine percent is because of that consolidation of the sewer rate. So it's not direct taking the, um, the rate and adding nine percent on sewer side. Uh, it's one-twenty-nine fifty for the twenty-year maturity, and one-twenty-nine twenty-nine, uh, for the thirty-year maturity. Um, and then you can see thereafter, uh, again, because slightly higher increases for the fifteen-year for the first couple of years, uh, and then as those start leveling off, um, you can see that, you know, the ending, ten-year out, what the potential rates would be for a fifteen versus, uh, the, the thirty-year maturity.
Was eight thousand gallons, is that like an average for what the city uses?
Typical.
Really?
Yeah, some using less, some using more, some, the irrig, don't have a separate irrigation meter.
Yeah, yeah, no.
So, I mean, we can come back and show you different levels, if you, if you'd like to see that, um, we can create a, a table that would show you at different.
No, I believe you tell me that's the average, that's the average, it just seems like a lot.
Oh, you know it's.
Like a lot?
Yeah, not, not compared to some of, many of our other customers.
Yeah.
That's, that's a, that's a reasonable average you monthly use.
And then this is just similar to the other, showing you what a typical bill would be, and again, these are showing you the, the other rates, if we knew they had rate increases going in as of October first, if we hadn't, if they hadn't finalized their October rates, um, they, they may have adjustments, cause we're right at that, you know, we're September thirtieth, so some haven't posted updated rates, uh, some have. And so you can see where each of the alternatives would be, obviously, the thirty-year is gonna be the slightly, you know, in February would be slightly lower, but there, those are all three right together, a few cents differential between the, the three this first year, so this, in February twenty-twenty-five. And then we're pretty much looking at direction on the three different maturities, the three financing scenarios, and then obviously, in order to update the rates in February, you would need to notice customers, uh, and do a, another rate hearing meeting, um, for those customers to have a new rate effective February first.
And just a, a reminder, we're not permitted to recommend the debt scenario. We can't, all we can do is run the numbers for you, so.
Okay.
So these, these scenarios, so this is, we're double, we're, we're paying the debt on the existing capital, and we're building a, a, a cash reserve in the process? So we're, we're getting hit basically double for the, for, for this stuff right now, to build cash reserves for, for future capital improvements?
Yeah, I wouldn't say you're getting hit twice, but what you're doing is, you're, based on the rate scenario that Tara, and you can come up with any rates, it's an infinite number of possibilities, but the rate scenarios that she's showing allows you to be cash-funded from that point forward. You only need the borrowings that she showed up here. If you want to be cash-funded from that point forward, which is a good position to be in, then this, those rate scenarios will do that for you.
And these are putting in, they're making sure, because you're, you're required hundred-and-twenty days cash on hand for operating expenses. Obviously, operating expenses are increasing, so that number's going up as well each year, so it is building that reserve fund to where it needs to have the, the so many days operating cash on hand, as well as putting some into your fund, yeah, your, your renewal replacement fund and your.
And covering your CIP costs. It's, it's covering all your metrics.
It's really, the stormwater is the one, because you, you have reserves in water and sewer, you just, you know, a fifty-million-dollar project is not something that you typically have.
But we're not going like, we're not going far over the matrix, right? We're not.
No, no, no.
Okay.
No, no, we're, we're.
Okay.
No, no, we're solving to the metrics.
Okay.
We are not trying to accumulate a, when we look at our dashboards and our graphs, and if it, you know, the cash fund looks like that, that's a, that's a bad scenario.
Right, okay.
We are, we are managing right to what your metrics are.
Okay.
It's the stormwater, we're trying to put some additional, because you have no reserve fund right now for stormwater. So it's trying to put some into that stormwater fund in addition to the days cash on hand. And then we're also making sure that you're meeting all your debt coverage requirements, and sufficiently meeting them, you know, not just one slight percentage over, because that's not going to help your credit rating.
Okay.
So it's making sure that you're meeting coverage, meeting your fund balance requirements, and also putting some money aside.
Okay.
To continue to do renewal replacements and pay as you go.
Am I understanding correctly that at the end of fifteen years, this would, the rate would allow us to have all of the money we, we'll have paid it all off, and there will not be any outstanding big expenditures needed?
Oh, no, we can't.
As our amount. Well, like, but hypothetically, like, I guess we could say it's a surprise we needed this in the first place. So once we switch over to the new style thing, and this is probably more for public works, built into the way utilities operate, my understanding is that the repair and replacement fund will fully cover the cost of, you know, if we need a new tank, that would be baked into the rate hypothetically with this. Granted, we revisit every five years.
That is the intent.
Okay.
That is the intent, but what it doesn't foresee is changes in regulation.
Okay.
It does not see, foresee changes in need for capacity, or, I mean, Bobby can speak to this better than I can. We cannot foresee that. You're planning for what you have now and what we know now. So if something like that, we see that a lot, where regulations change and you're forced to make some pretty significant changes to your treatment or to your system in general, and you can't know that.
So you need direction on the fifteen, twenty, or thirty?
For us to finalize the rate studies, we just need you guys to tell us, this is the rate scenario we want to go with, or the debt scenario. We'll work with your FA to make sure our numbers, our debt service numbers are as final as they can be, and we'll rerun it, and then we can make recommendations.
Based off the examples you showed, I would be aligned with the fifteen-year, just not to pay all the interest.
Well, I was, I was okay with the fifteen-year on the water and sewer, but I was, I was leaning more towards the thirty-year on the, on the stormwater.
I'm fifteen on both. I'm curious to see ten, but I think that's probably, nobody else probably wants to see ten. So I could live with fifteen.
Councilmember Britton?
Fifteen.
Fifteen minutes?
Fifteen on both.
Fifteen on both. All right.
All right.
We done?
Thank you.
We're done.
All right.
That's all we need.
Thank you, folks. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Tamara, if we could just take a few minutes to switch out?
I figured that.
Thanks, Tara.
No, I got one.
Oh, nice.
Thank you, Dan.
You can have a public comment.
From where?
Over there, yeah.
Fifty question, boss, what do you want to say?
Yeah, you're welcome. I'm Jeff Bottley. Hey, Kay, nice to meet you.
Greg.
Hey, Greg, how are you?
Jeff.
Jeff.
Can you remind you?
Hey, you got that right.
I saw a day or two ago, by your screening corner, when I was talking to you.
It's been so long.
Was it?
It's been so long.
Yeah.
I was wondering, because there was two that were going along the fence.
Maybe it was a good afternoon.
And then there was one, he was down at the bottom, and my hunting dog had no clue. But I was just going to dig around, and just jumped up to my spot.
I'm not, no.
About the morning, about that day.
Brian's gone.
He put me in the wrong chair. I should be over there with two.
My great-grandmother does the taste.
We do know, know, my mother is a good chef.
Good question.
That's why you have the dumpster out there.
Yeah, you want this comparison, you know, the whole thing.
Let's see what's in the comments.
I think it's, it must have been off nature.
No.
I would be surprised. I mean, there was a lot of misfits that came through that
I've got some, that'll be nice.
Did you already do the foreword, or you got to do the foreword too?
I already did, but I might have a brief reading.
It never ends.
It'd be nice.
Yeah.
Are you guys ready? Are you all ready?
All right, I think we're, I think we're ready to get started here.
I know. Give, you know, coffee time.
I'm going to hang in the back again.
Okay, so we'll get started here. I do believe we have one individual that would like to have public comment before we get started on this. Mr. Axel, did you want to talk?
Excuse me, sir, can you keep it down?
Mr. Beavers, keep an eye on that, Dylan, back here.
David Axel, Axel Real Estate, seventeen fifty-seven West Broadway Street, Suite One. I did send an email. I don't know if it found its way to you. So I'll very quickly summarize. You've got a work session for the Land Development Code, and I don't want to belabor too many points, but there's a couple areas that I thought merited your, your review and, and direction, and I'll just quickly summarize what they are. And then if, if in the discussion these things come up, feel free to call on me. So really quickly, and I'll kind of go by the, the sections these are in, and for most of them, I kind of have the page numbers. So the first one, page sixteen, section two point seven, which is deviations. During the process of working with the Land Development Code Committee, we had changed the language there, that instead of mitigation may be required, it was shall, except as otherwise provided. And when I listened to the recording of the meeting, we were to come up with what the exceptions were subsequently, and we did not. So what I was suggesting is subsection C three there talks about mitigation, making up for any impacts you have to neighboring properties. So my suggestion was, if you don't have an impact neighboring properties, you should not be required to mitigate, which years past kind of had been the practice. And to be fair, the, the staff's flexible on these issues. But when you've got a code that by its nature may have arbitrary standards that, that satisfy general criteria, if a specific property can't meet them, they shouldn't really, if they don't harm their neighbors, be punished, in, in my view. So the next item, four point one three, subsection A E Roman numeral six, has a requirement in the downtown districts and, and the transition district for cross-block passages, and it obligates the granting of an easement or some other public access in favor of the city. I think that runs contrary to your property rights element, which provides, based on state statute, that you have the right to control your own property and shouldn't be burdened by such things. So I think that merits review. That's on page ninety-three. On page ninety-six, really in the same section, you've got what I think is, is one of the worst things. It's a requirement in the downtown core for a sixteen to twenty-foot streetscape of a certain design. And I'll just tell you, in a lot of locations, the right-of-way simply does not exist. So the obligation to provide right-of-way just to develop your property, not based in any way, manner, or form on the intensity of your project compared to what you had there before, I think could be construed as an illegal taking. And at the very least, there is a state statute that was amended effective tomorrow, that basically provides all the costs associated with that would have to be covered by the city with regard to fee credits. So that includes the right-of-way, the design, the construction, and so on and so forth. And it was kind of in the statute before, but now it's crystal clear. And it basically says in the statute, no matter how it's imposed, you've got to grant credit. So from the city perspective, I would be concerned, and a really good example would be along four thirty-four, north and south of Broadway, in a lot of locations, the entire width of the streetscape, which has the understory trees, the lighting, the sidewalk, everything, is eight feet. The requirement is sixteen to twenty feet. So you could see what that would impose on folks. One of the ways to deal with this is to only apply it to larger assemblages where it makes sense and people are capable of doing it. What that assemblage might be, I think in the comp plan for mixed use type things, we had a five-acre threshold. I think, you know, something smaller could work, but right now, folks with really small lots would have a heavy burden on them. And based on the section I just quoted earlier, they would be obligated to provide mitigation, even though it might be an illegal exaction, and even though the city should be providing credit. The same thing applies in section four one three D two A, where there's a fifteen-foot streetscape requirement in the Central Avenue District, which is part of the downtown transition area. In that area, I can tell you, I worked on the Chalonian Project, which has its approval, so it wouldn't be necessarily affected. But the sum total amount of room available from the edge of the, the actual roadway and its curb was eight feet, and you're obligated to put in sixteen to twenty. Obviously, it doesn't work. Lastly, and I think the council's spoken about it many times, Article fifteen, section fifteen two E is tree replacement. And as proposed right now, although there's a percentage applied, there's an intent to impose tree fees based on, on the fact that folks own property that have larger diameter trees. This methodology, without percentages, but this methodology was found by the United States Sixth District Court of Appeal to be unconstitutional. That case was cited by Pacific Legal Rights Foundation when they brought the Sheets case to the Supreme Court. Although that case wasn't referenced, the Sheets decision was nine, nothing, in favor of the plaintiff. And the basic premise was, you cannot legislatively take away from people what in the executives you can't take without compensation. So I think that's contrary to the direction I've heard from council, and you guys should be concerned. This may not affect a lot of properties, but whoever it does affect and affects big is going to have issues with it. So that, that's all I've got, unless there's questions from the council as you have your discussion. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Since we did open up public comment, is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. Mr. Cobb, did you want to kick us off, or?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yes, tonight, we're, we'll be discussing the update to the Land Development Code. Ms. Katie Madruger and Mr. Greg Witherspoon from Kenley Horn are here with us to present the latest update. Excuse me, I'm sorry. We also have Dr. Correa and Mr. Burns Cadel and Ms. Pierre here as well, representing staff. And so I'll turn it over to Ms. Madruger and let her start the presentation.
All right, thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm Katie McGrier. I am standing in today for Eliza Giuliano, who you saw here, I believe, about a year ago. She unfortunately has a very high fever, so I'm here today in her place and here with Greg Witherspoon to assist with any landscaping and tree questions. All right, so just to kick this off, we want to have a strategic impact with this adoption. So ensuring that new development or redevelopment is done in a sustainable manner, modifying the Land Development Code regulations to facilitate good redevelopment, review redevelopment regulations to serve the goals of the Mobility and Transportation Strategic Focus Area, and review development regulations to serve the goals of the Recreation Arts Culture and Strategic Focus Areas. So these updates will be consistent with the twenty forty-five Comprehensive Plan, the transportation constraints, capitalizing on existing infrastructure, updating parking and complete street standards, simplifying sign standards, simplifying zoning district standards, and updating graphics and illustrations for multifamily and non-residential. I'm not sure if Teresa and Debra were going to cover this, but I know the LDCC and LPA have put a lot of time and effort into coordinating with us and with staff on this. So this is just a demonstration of just how much time has been put into this process so far. So we'll start out with a reorganization of the LDC. We're providing a new table of contents. We're shifting all the landscape, parking, architectural, lighting, and signage regulations to their appropriate sections of the code, as well as making sure that the definitions are all included in one chapter at the end and easily findable, including all of the terminologies that have been requested of staff in both LPA and LDCC. So we're going to go one, through each article and kind of hit each of the highlights of the changes in those sections. So the preamble, we just have a minor shift of language. Article two, the land use administrator has been given more authority on RSOs and ADOs, updating the LPA membership from five to seven. I believe there is an outstanding non-consenting item having to do with who makes up the LPA board that I know Teresa and Debra will speak to you about following this presentation. The addition of subdivision plans for eight lots or less, called a minor subdivision plan, and that will help for getting through the missing middle housing without such an arduous review process. without such an arduous review process. And an addition of a public outreach section to better let developers know what's expected of them as part of that. Article 3 will have the establishment of planning horizons for development agreements, changes of approval authority of architectural design orders from the City Council to the land use authority, and addition of minor subdivision plans, as we just spoke about. So the zoning district regulations, to make it a little bit more clear where each of the zoning district falls and correlates with the future land use districts, we've implemented this table into the code. So when you're rezoning, you'll have the option of going to one of the zoning districts that's in the right column, depending on what your future land use is or your proposed future land use is. For the zoning district regulations, we've added maximum heights for all zoning districts here. Districts here, you can see, this is just a blow-up of the target areas which are being created through this process. And then each of the non-residential zoning districts have been increased in height from 35 to 60 feet throughout. We've created a new zoning district called R1C. It fits nicely between the R1BB and R2 zoning districts. And this is to address this smaller lot area of Milton Square, Washington Park, Jackson Heights, Estes Edition. And the proposed minimum lot size is 4,400 square feet with a minimum lot width of 50 feet. We got a lot of questions about that at the LDCC. So the goal here is not to create a zoning district that straight up allows a 28-foot wide lot. We're trying to create a zoning district that will maintain the larger lots that are still within that area and prevent them from splitting even further. And so any lot that's less than 50 feet wide will still have the ability to develop. And we've added standards that allow for the Land Use Administrator to have additional authorities to approve smaller setbacks on these lots, so they won't have to go through the deviation process every time they want to develop, like a single-family home. We've also created a new mixed-use zoning district to correlate with the mixed-use future land use district. And we've established new standards for density and intensity bonus based on the comprehensive plan. And so this goes into that a little bit. We have, we have density and intensity bonuses based on affordable housing and workforce housing, green building practices, whether you establish a publicly accessible plaza, courtyard, or open space, or public school on your property, funding, public transportation programs, or onsite public transportation facilities, any structured parking that you include additional parking for publicly accessible, any targeted businesses or industries, or museum, libraries, or other cultural facilities on your site, space that contributes to the public realm that doesn't meet the criteria of the publicly accessible plaza above, and then any preservation of a historic structure. We've come up with a new permitted uses table that we think will be easier to read. And we've gotten rid of some of the antiquated uses that we don't see much of or don't see any at all in the city, and then added any of the new uses that are being fleshed out through this process, like accessory dwelling units and multiplexes. For Articles 5, 6, and 7, Article 5 combines all accessory structures into one article. They were initially laid out by use, and so now they're all in one section. And it establishes the standards for accessory dwelling units. I will point out, I saw in the cloud today that there was some discussion about whether or not accessory dwelling units should have parking spaces in the target areas. Is that something that we want to talk about today?
Yeah, we'll raise that.
Okay, so we can get to that when you all, when you all present. So Article 6 has been deleted, and the standards have been moved to the relevant sections throughout the code. Article 7 has addressed developing undeveloped lots as well as combining non-conforming lots. So if you have the ability, if there's the same ownership of two non-conforming lots and you're trying to develop something, they're going to make you combine them so that you create a non-conforming, or you create a conforming lot as opposed to a non-conforming lot. For Article 8, architectural design, we've added transparency and architectural standards for townhomes and multifamily. We've added design standards for parking garages and some minor edits and renumbering. For concurrency, there's the addition of the mobility plan and fee, which was handled largely by staff. For floodways, floodplains, and drainage and erosion, there are just some minor changes. For streets and sidewalks, all new roadways must accommodate bicycle traffic. So shared lanes will be required on roads below 25 miles per hour. Bike lanes will be required on curbed roadways with posted speeds greater than 25 miles per hour. So as proposed today, there's no dead ends that would be allowed within the downtown core or in the downtown transition future land use. And downtown transition includes both the new downtown neighborhood zoning district as well as Central Avenue zoning district that exists today. And I know that this one will be up for discussion when Teresa and Debra present. For the landscaping article, we're removing the required buffers in these downtown target areas. It maximizes land use efficiency, encourages walking and connectivity by allowing buildings and uses to be closer together, making the uses more compact and incentivizes urban infill and redevelopment by removing excessive landscape requirements on constrained sites. For the parking section, we have reduced some of the parking requirements to make it more compatible with industry standard. We've reduced some required parking spaces in residential, restaurant, and other uses within the target areas where it's trying to be more urbanized. We've added shared use parking calculations for mixed-use developments. We revised regulations for drive-through stacking, and we've added bicycle parking requirements. For signs, we have added a table, one by non-residential and one residential, to show where these signs are permitted in each of the zoning districts. We've added some graphics to the code to better clarify what is considered sign area, what would be considered a background versus an architectural or supporting element. We've also added some graphics here to better explain what these signs are. So a directional sign such as this, which we think is required to help someone find your business, this would not count towards your total sign area. So you get one of these signs per frontage to tell people where to go, and it doesn't count against you. We added new freestanding sign standards. We tried to simplify this. So we have business property signs that will apply, you know, citywide to any type of freestanding business based on their size. Then we get into environmental preservation.
So in terms of the tree replacement, we've developed an entirely new process for not only evaluating the current stock on a particular site, but also how those mitigation calculations would occur. So first off, a tree survey is now required for all the, all the development sites. And we have created a system whereby it's going to be an inch-by-inch calculation for the existing trees on site, those that are eight inches and above. It would be a diameter-at-breast height measurement. For the new trees, those are typically trees that are six inches or smaller, and that would be a minimum of a two-and-a-half-inch caliber calculation, so we can equate inches to inches. There is a required calculation for any mitigation development project where we calculate all the trees that are going to be removed by inches. And then we also add in all the proposed trees and any of the trees that have been preserved as inches, and that's where you get your mitigation calculation. After the mitigation, if there's still a balance to meet the required, the required tree canopy, there's options of planting additional trees on site or increasing the caliber of trees. We've got a minimum two-and-a-half-inch requirement, you can increase that size. And then the last option is a payment to the tree mitigation bank that's been established. And then if you take one more. As far as the ratio of replacement goes, the inches are one-to-one, but the size is really critical. And so there is a greater percentage required of replacement or mitigation for larger trees. And, you know, we believe, and we've seen this in action in other municipalities, where this actually encourages the preservation of existing trees because of the mitigation cost associated with removing some of those trees.
So then we get back into the utility section, which just has some minor edits. In the recreation facilities and open spaces, we've clarified the different types of open space and minimum open space by development type. There are some potential conflicts with the comprehensive plan in this area. So we have worked with staff to identify what that is, and those can be updated with the staff comprehensive plan amendments that are moving forward. And then for the basic definitions, we've really moved all of the definitions that were scattered throughout the code to this area. And then we added a bunch of new terminologies to clarify anything that was not clear. And that was through the LPA and LDCC and staff direction. So we wanted to pass it back to staff to go through what some of the non-consensus items were so that we can talk through those today.
Okay, can we shift them?
Okay, so, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Today, we want to tackle three things apart from any other, you know, discussion that you may bring. The items that we did not have consensus from the boards, from the LDCC and the LPA. New items that were raised during the last LDCC session, and then the public art contribution. So to start with the consensus, non-consensus items. One is the LPA composition. So the consultant has proposed that we have a more professional composition of the LPA. And that would have, from the seven members, at least four would have from those following professions. Today, we had one suggestion from a council member that we would have also a cap to the profession so that we do not end up with four architects or four environmental, you know, professionals or realtors, so to have, you know, an access of one profession and one perspective in the, in the LPA. The LDCC proposes, recommends that composition, and also gave as a potential negotiation to limit to three instead of four. The LPA would like that language to be removed. So that is one that we would like direction from council. The only thing I'm going to say is that for the LPA, we are also increasing the responsibilities. So now the minor subdivision plan is, we are giving the authority for the approval to the LPA.
So on this, it says should include, so it's not necessarily a hard line.
It is, it's not a hard line. If you don't find the, you know, the residents that do not fit that.
Because I can tell you, when I was on it, I didn't have any, any of them on there when I was on the LPA. So, and I realize it's just a matter of, you know, who you can find that wants to volunteer their time and be on that.
I think, I think that, I agree with the LPA's consensus on it. I think the city, the city council should, should look at the applicants and make a determination. And it shouldn't be, you know, there shouldn't be a specific requirement that the city council has to follow on that. I think it should just, the city council should have the final say on who's on that board.
I concur.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, we've got a technical issue, and we need to recess for a few minutes to let the computer reboot, so.
Okay, how long do you need? Five minutes, all right, five minutes. Oh, jeez, okay. We're getting started.
I'm ready.
All right. So we're on the discussion of whether or not we needed these specific professions on the LPA or not, so. Councilwoman Burton, you've been on, you were on that for quite a while.
I was. It's a citizen board. I don't know if we need to have professionals on there. We need to have professionals on staff, and they need to be able to explain it to those board members so they can understand what they're recommending or not recommending. And by the way, that would be helpful for us when it gets to us. If it can be explained to our level from them or through them, then that's the way I'd prefer it.
I guess I would say I don't, I don't mind either way, but I do feel like we have a lot of these people on the board right now. I guess sometimes we don't, though. So I do see the preference of wanting some citizens with background because we, they do get a lot of technical items, and some of them don't understand the background. But as you said, staff could help with that, so.
Well, honestly, it wasn't mandatory, that's, you know.
Well, I don't even think that is mandatory.
To me, I get that the word should is like, it's nice to have if you, if you could.
Yeah.
But you don't have to.
It's more of a guideline than, than a requirement.
Then we shouldn't even put it in there because I think as amongst council members, when we're looking at who would be a good fit for this board, the people that have these backgrounds naturally sort of seem like a better fit, so. I don't know, I would be disinclined to codify this just because it may discourage people who may be very, you know, maybe a philosophy person, but you are an avid reader of urban planning books or something, and that might be the perfect person for us.
And I think we're trying, as, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I said, it is, it is helpful to have someone on there. JR Ball was on it for, I don't know how many years, and he was a professional engineer, civil engineer, and he was able to explain stuff to those of us that didn't, didn't understand it. Still, there was a lot of us on that board that didn't have that background.
If I can speak for LDCC, they thought, first off, there were other cities around are doing it. I think Orlando has this requirement, so other big cities. With the city wanting to go to an urbanized standard, those are much more complicated. And the LDC felt like if you had more professional people, they would understand it better because, because the new code has expanded, has expanded place for the LDC on their decision-making. So they felt like, as they said, four, and they understand we can't go seven, but, but their thought was if we put four, then that will encourage council. That's what we, that would encourage more people in those professions to apply, saying this is people we want on the board. So they felt like putting it out there where somebody coming in and, yeah, should I apply? Okay, well, the, this, the council wants this, these kind of people on there, so yeah, I should go and apply. So I think their thought was it'll encourage more people in these professions. When they see it in the code and they say, at least four, it would encourage more people to apply. And I think that was part of the reasoning behind it was, and to keep up the cities, and we are going, we are, the code is much urbanized. And as you've known, it's a complete rewrite of the code, and we're changing a lot of things, we're trying to do the urban core and develop it so it's a downtown core. So there was a feeling that, that these kind of professionals would help. And that, and there was the argument about, the first thing was should we require it? And they said, no, let's go with the word should, so we'll encourage council to look for these kind of people, and these kind of people as well to apply. And that's, that was the thought of putting it in the code so people would look at it and say, okay, I'm a land planner, yeah, maybe that makes sense, I can go and do some good. So that was, that was what I believe they were thinking.
And if I can just add to what he just said, the LDCC also wanted to give the board, LPA, more authority. So Dr. Correa mentioned it earlier, the preliminary, minor preliminary subdivision plan would be approved by LPA. So with a new level of authority, they wanted to have some more specialized backgrounds on the board.
We're no more specialized than that. I still think it should be a citizen board.
I agree. Especially with the word "should." I mean, why do we want to put like a gray area in the, in the new code? I mean, if you, if you want it, then it should say "shall," and if you don't, then just take it out.
They are, right now, a recommending board, right? They make recommendations to the city council.
In, in most of applications, but for the minor subdivision plan, they are now being giving, approving authority.
But then, somebody could appeal it to us. So, the worst-case scenario here, and I think what probably the people on LDCC are concerned about is, what if, what if these people say no to minor subdivision, and this causes the need to spend more time and money and resources to appeal to city council, where maybe we would say yes? Is that, is that the concern? Like, I'm trying to figure out what the, what the inspiration is.
Well, I think, you know, the city council is more familiar with the approval process than LPA for the major subdivisions, or the major applications, right? So, so one question is that, are you okay giving more authority to the LPA on the minor subdivision plan, if they are not, you know, if we not require them to be more professional?
Yes. What do you guys think?
I agree.
That's fine. But let's, let's go ahead and finish this. I mean, so, Councilmember Britton, you, you want it left in?
As I should, at the most, otherwise, take it out.
Councilmember Tucher?
I feel like we have consensus to take it out, so.
Take it out.
Take it out. Okay, so, no, the LPA recommendation will prevail.
You know, when you put out the forms of requests for people to apply for it, you can put the technical background that they might need to serve on the board, I don't mind that, but...
But they may not need, right? If they can apply, yeah.
But anyway, I don't want to discourage people that may not have those qualifications from applying.
Understood. The second item, so go back, and it's okay to give them the preliminary subdivision plan for minor subdivisions, right? To keep it as proposed.
Yep.
The second item is a discussion on dead-end roads being public or private. There was a request that we would consider, if a road does not connect to another road, so if it's a cul-de-sac, then that necessarily puts that road not to be dedicated to the city. That would be private road, even if it meets the requirement of a city road, which is 50 feet. We took it to both boards, and the LDCC agrees with being optional, so if it meets the requirement, if it's a 50-foot right-of-way, it would be optional for the developer to be public or private, and the LPA recommended that would be necessarily private. And we have also different positions within staff. Public Works is okay with the optional, and their argument was that if a developer meets the requirement, then it should, it should be a public street. And we see the side of not connecting, because we want to stimulate connectivity, so if it's not connecting, we see less value of having it public.
I like the LPA's thought on this. For several years now, I've been concerned about the city taking on additional, streets are liabilities, sidewalks are liabilities. If the street doesn't go anywhere or benefit anybody outside the neighborhood or development that is built, it doesn't make sense for the public at large to cover the cost of keeping up that stuff. So, even though it may have been done in the past, and it may feel unfair not to let future people do it, just because we made a bad decision in the past, there's no reason not to fix it going forwards. And this fixes a problem of accepting, accepting additional liabilities. And it's fair, because nobody is going to not know about it ahead of time, so we don't have the issue of, well, maybe that doesn't feel fair. Well, you know, coming in, these are the rules.
I prefer the LDCC's consensus. I mean, if they meet the requirements of a public road, then they should, they should have the option of, the developer should have the option of determining that it's public or private.
Is there a way that we could do a hybrid of that, and prior to accepting the road, put it into a special road district? That's how the county addresses this scenario. And then, there is a dedicated funding source with a dedicated village to cover the roads, and perhaps the sidewalks, in that particular new space. I don't know if that's something that's available to cities, if we do it prior to accepting the dedication. Mr. Hall, do you know off the bat?
I do not know. I know there are special road districts set up. I have not looked at the requirements, what you have to do, but we can check that out if you want. That's obviously a good, that's obviously a good option.
Because I, I think that, that addresses the issue of, well, what if the HOA doesn't do a good job? We know we can do a good job of stormwater and doing the, we can, by pavement in bulk, we can address a lot of these issues and economy of scales, to make sure that the residents are taken care of, but also make sure that...
Problem is, we gotta pay for it.
Yeah, but then we would have that dedicated funding source that people would know about coming in. I think that might be a hybrid that I could live with.
I have a clarification question here. If you're building a property that doesn't have anybody next to it, is this, would this be satisfied to keep it public if they put future connection points?
Well, if there is a possibility to connect, yes.
Right, okay, so we're just making sure they don't close it off, right?
Yeah, but you know how that goes, once, once it goes in there, I mean, we've seen...
Live Oak and Riverside will never connect now.
Well, we've seen it in so many locations, I mean, where there's stub outs and they never...
Beckstrom's never going through to Lake Hayes.
Yeah, but I see that this is what this is trying to prevent, you know? Anybody can make a development and keep the stub out, and say, we're gonna allow access in the future, and if they don't, they keep it private. You, you would have to require a cross-access agreement with approval, so that when the next property comes in, that you require their development to line up with that stub out and connect to it. So is that kind of a loophole, I guess? If we allowed cross-access, and then the next guy comes in, and they say no, they're still getting public roads, but they... You don't approve the development unless they meet the cross-access requirement?
So both would have to meet the cross-access?
Yes.
Or the second one would not be approved?
And so, when you approve the first development, you get it in writing, you get the agreement in writing, and when the new one comes in, you make their site plan meet up with that. Is this legal to require? I'm just looking at the legality of it.
So, we're talking about maybe two different things. One is cross-access easement from, from driveways.
Yeah, but the purpose of this, right, is to make sure you can go through, right? So both parts would have to...
This would be a stub for a road, right? To connect with future roads. So we will have to see if it makes sense, if there is any, if there is a possibility of an additional road, right? If it's completely developed around... So this is more, it's, it's, it's more complicated than a cross-access easement, because it's...
Could you give me a real-life example? I'm trying to, I'm having a hard time figuring this out.
Well, would Alfae Woods be an example here?
Yes.
Right? So we are completely, my area, the street, it goes into the neighborhood and out, we don't go anywhere else. So then, that would make this private streets.
So we have one new development coming at Lake Jessup now, which is a 13 subdivision, lots of division, and it's a cul-de-sac, right? So it's one road that has a cul-de-sac, 13 homes.
It's not gated.
It's not gated. Now, do, is that road, they are meeting the, the minimum requirements for a street, for a public street. Do we want that to be a public street?
No.
Or private street? That is, that is the question.
If it's not gated, why would we want it to be private?
For maintenance.
Why would we pay for it if nobody uses it but the 13 houses that go down it, and they're invitees and guests? It doesn't make any sense for the whole...
There's cul-de-sacs all over the place, that people don't only use it for their purposes.
Well, that, that goes back to what I said before, just because we did it in the past, doesn't mean that it's financially wise for us to keep doing it in the future. We have an opportunity here to stop doing the unwise thing.
The code also not, disencourages cul-de-sacs today. So today, cul-de-sacs are not allowed in, in some target areas, in the urban areas, because we want the connectivity. And also, the code today, cul-de-sacs can only be approved by, by city council.
We're gonna, we'll use the cul-de-sac for access for waste pickup, fire services, you know, first responders, all kinds of stuff is gonna use that road besides those people.
But they're only going there to help the people who live there, so the first responders are only there because...
They're gonna help the people who live anywhere, on any street.
So, so are you, are you gonna take the phone call when they need, when they need roadwork done or sidewalks done, and say, sorry, you're a private road now?
We do that already with, with people who are on private roads, and people know they're on private roads.
There's very few private roads that...
The gated communities, I understand. That's it.
Well, isn't the one off of Lake Jessup, there's maybe eight houses back there, I can't remember the name of it, on the opposite side from probably where this 13 is going, around the old depot, train depot. That, I think, is a private road, and it just goes back, it's not even wide enough, so it doesn't meet the criteria.
Yes, some, some are private because they did not meet the, the standard, right? So they are 40 feet right-of-way, not 50, so...
I, I may be, may be misreading, but just to clarify, this would not, all of a sudden, make all of the roads that don't meet the standards private?
Correct, yeah.
This would be for any new development coming in.
This is in a way to encourage connectivity, right? If you want to, you know, connect, then, and you meet the standards of the, of a city road, then...
I guess I like that part of it, right? I like to encourage connectivity. I'm kind of like on the fence when talking about this part, because, you know, if there's 17 houses, I get it, you know, they're not helping anybody with those 17 houses, but on the flip side, like Alfae Woods is a good example, there's 2,300 homes in there, and those roads all connect to each other, and you can get through the neighborhood a bunch of different ways, and you're servicing 2,300 times, two and a half a household, like thousands of people, right?
Yeah, but again, it's not very existing. I mean, I'm, I'm leaning towards the LPA consensus, I mean...
No, I meant like if the same development came in in the future.
In the future.
Like, it's still is servicing a lot of people, so there's different situations. But the cross-access easements almost seems like the better route.
Is that a precedence we want to set, that just because the number of houses is a small unit?
No, well, that's why I'm...
Small number, that they only use that street, we do that, versus 1,200 homes in Alfae Woods that has all kinds of those cul-de-sacs, and they're okay with it?
Well, I think we need to just kind of, in our brains, separate what already exists from what future could possibly exist, because the, we're not gonna make private roads in Alfae Woods, and if it were built again, Live Oak probably should all be private, like all these places that only service the people there, and that nobody walks on the sidewalks but the people who live there and those who are invited.
Well, we're not talking about existing project, we're talking about future projects.
Yeah, we're talking about future, so, and that's the thing, like, if we were to do it again...
Everything that's already existing, exists.
Yeah, absolutely.
But are we fixing the main issue, I guess? And I, I agree, what is existing is existing, but in the future, we wouldn't allow it to be built the way those are built.
No.
We make them, isn't that the main problem we have here?
Right, the connectivity.
And are we fixing that side, the connectivity side?
Yeah.
Well, it creates a big incentive to figure out how to connect, or accept the consequence of, you've got yourself a private road here. And it's not an unfair consequence, in my opinion, to, to have that scenario.
So you've got 17 homes, new homes, you gotta have an HOA that's gotta create the money to pay for that roadwork.
There's 22 new homes on Pine Avenue that have a private road.
That's a private road.
I know, but this, this would just say that if you're coming and you're making a dead-end subdivision similar to that one...
It's a gated community, right?
It's not gated.
It's not, why is it private?
Because it doesn't meet the...
Because the road isn't quite wide enough.
That's not the new neighborhood.
But it still is perfectly safe for a fire truck, so this, I think, potentially serves an environmental purpose, in that then people could have less than 50 feet wide right-of-ways, and have more, more places for runoff to sink into the ground. So I like that angle of it, too.
So does this apply to stormwater, too? Would be their responsibility to maintain their stormwater?
No, this is just for roads.
So we're...
Two LPAs.
You two, LDCC and the mayor, LPA.
Public is determined by the developer. I think the developer comes and wants to make it private, that's his call, but I think otherwise, it ought to be a private road.
Councilwoman Tucher, I don't know where she stands.
Um, yeah, I mean, the, if they don't make it up to our standards, right, it's gonna be private anyways, is that correct?
That's correct.
So if they're coming up to our standards, then the city would take it over. That's the question on the table.
Today, yes.
Which is like a double whammy, because if you make it extra wide with extra pavement, then we take it over, and we have extra lots to maintain, but if...
Those are our requirements that we're going over right now.
I know, I know, yeah.
That's a different thing.
So that's also the, the argument from Public Works, the counterargument, that in a way, with, you know, not accepting private roads, or public roads, then you are also stimulating those roads to be substandard roads. So that's their argument, that, you know, they were afraid of...
Which could also cause problems, yeah. Okay. Um, yeah, I guess I'll, I'll go with LPA. Oh, sorry, LDCC?
Okay.
LDCC.
Yep, the LDCC suggestion, yep.
So, this one, we have two different issues here. One is the landscape, and that was a minor one. There was a standard that parking garages should have landscape around the building.
Have what?
Landscape.
Landscape.
Around the building. And the LPA, LDCC thinks that it should be optional, and staff agrees with that, and LPA thinks it should be required.
What about the choice of art or landscaping? Because at Lake Nona, they've got some very beautiful parking garages, but it's not because of landscaping, it's, you know, painting and architecturally...
Lake Nona requires all parking garages to be landscaped, it's in the city of Orlando.
All right, well, there you go. Whatever they got going on there, they are quite pretty. So I'm inclined to go with landscaping, then. But I remember more the colors than the landscaping.
Listen, public garden in addition to landscaping?
They went all...
That's the ticket.
So, we, actually, it would be good to, Greg, to clarify, because one of the issues that we had in discussion is that pushing landscape very close to the building. So, so the issues that it may bring.
It's very common to have landscape close to buildings. It's a matter of choosing the right plant for the right place. All of the parking garages at Lake Nona, for instance, are surrounded by very lush landscaping, almost 90% of which is native plant material. So I'm, I propose, I'm in support of landscape around buildings, so...
And I think we initially had had some large tree requirements in that landscaping area, and through the LDCC discussion with Greg present, we removed the large tree requirement, and it's now just an understory tree requirement, in addition to shrubs and, and ground cover.
I'm not opposed to eliminating all trees, because once they start knocking into the side, I don't want to create a maintenance issue, or animals jumping in and scratching people's cars, or anything like that. I can't even conceive of a parking garage in Oviedo at this time. That being said, having a little fluffy native grass barrier at the bottom, that would, that would soften it a lot, coming out of the ground.
Yeah, I'd like, I would think of it need to be minimal for security reasons. You don't want a big bush out there for some knucklehead to be hiding in. But I, I do see garages that are architecturally designed to where they don't even look like garages anymore.
Yeah.
Is that something we're gonna do, too?
Yes, we have architectural standards for, for parking garages.
Does Winter Park require landscaping around their parking garages?
I'm not sure.
I'm, I'm not sure in terms of the specificity associated with parking garages, however, they do have landscape at base building requirements, so I don't know if that's the same or not. I'd have to, I'd have to go back and look at the code.
I'd be in favor of the landscaping.
The only parking garage I can remember in Winter Park is that weird one that's kind of behind Park Avenue, I think Rollins people go to it, too.
So this is the Rollins Garage Sun Trust, and you can see that they have palm trees and bushes around.
And the palm trees don't add that much. I mean, I guess they kind of do, it goes with the college. But don't know.
So, Madam Mayor, you were the LDCC consensus, you were opposed to landscaping?
No, I think a hybrid.
Optional, that's, well, it is.
Well, not optional.
It says, it says, "should be optional, not required, as proposed."
No, I think it should be required.
So then, you're the LPA. Still, then you're the LPA.
Well, yeah, I guess I am.
We'll come back to you.
Okay, yeah, I, I require, but not with trees.
Councilmember Pollak?
I don't know. I, I, I think it's gotta make sense. Um, I, I would, I would prefer if it was, you know, if they, well, I guess if it's required, they could still, they could still deviate from it, correct, and mitigate it?
Any quantifiable measure from the code can be deviated, yes.
Okay, so I'll go with LPA, then.
LPA, Councilwoman Tucker?
Man, I really, um, don't have a strong preference if there's shrubs in front of a parking garage.
Councilmember Britton?
That's supposed to be my line.
I was...
I just like, uh, this is not a hill I'd die on either way, so if you guys have a preference, by all means.
I, I don't mind requiring it, but it, it should be minimal. Uh, there's nothing here that says what the, what the standard will be. I don't want a bunch of bushes and trees and everything else.
That's... That's where I'm at, too. Uh, anything that would require permanent irrigation by a parking garage, I, I would not be in favor of that. So it's one thing if you get it established, or you can establish it without even having to put irrigation in the first place, and then you just let it go. So if it's, that's kind of what it hinges on for me is, you're, you've got, you, you guys have thoughts? It has to have irrigation, or what?
That's what I was asking, I think we would require irrigation.
'Cause I wouldn't, that's like an unnecessary cost, it's a parking garage, nobody's hanging out there for funsies.
So, y- yes, um, in all of these commercial cases, I would recommend having a commercial irrigation system to help establish the landscape. Depending on the landscape design, that is something that you can really curtail after about sixteen months of establishment, and potentially even turn it off, depending on what that design is. But it should have an initial irrigation system to help get everything established.
Now, do we, going back to it, do we have what the land, do we have what the landscaping, the minimum landscaping requirements would be, though?
We can pull.
And if you tip me off at page, I'd be grateful, I've got a PDF in there.
It was like a five-foot buffer, wasn't it?
Some bushes, that, that's, you know, that's about the minimum.
Yeah, I wouldn't want anybody to have to, like, go and, and hedge the thing, and keep it from touching the paint, and ruining the, it should just be a low maintenance.
So it's page, will be page two eighteen.
Two eighteen.
But we can, just can I...
Okay, so it's a five-foot perimeter landscape. A continuous planting consisting of landscaping capable of achieving a minimum of thirty inches in height. So it's, it's kind of like a hedge. One understory tree or palm tree planted for each fifteen feet.
Yeah, that's, that's, I'd be in favor of taking out the, the tree mandate, but something down low.
I'm gonna go with make this optional, for my opinion, because...
So, and that was our, we liked the idea of putting landscape, but we thought optional would be better than required. If we are required, then we have to see what kind of, the thing is that if, if you have a parking garage, usually it's a huge mass, and you have just ground-level landscape, it does nothing, right? So you should have some, at least palm trees, something that goes vertical. And that was our, a little bit of our concern, is bringing trees, you know, close to the building, unless we accept, um, palm trees as the landscape, you know, for parking garage.
Our tree requirements still apply to the lots, though. So they're gonna want to put in trees at some points to not tap into paying into a tree bank, right?
We do not count palm trees as trees.
Right, but other kinds of trees, right? So they're gonna, they're gonna wanna put in some kind of landscape.
In, but that's the thing, if you put a live oak next to, you know, within five feet, that, of the building, that's...
Alright, I'm changing to optional, ma'am.
Alright, so you're optional, optional?
I get, yeah, I get, I'm, I'm, no, no tree, yeah.
Alright, we got consensus, it's the LDCC, optional.
Forget what I said. We had consensus.
For clarification, do you want us to keep it in the code as optional, or do you not want it in the code?
Just delete it.
And they can choose to do it?
I mean, if it's optional, it's not something...
Just to the shall, shall, should comment from the LPA before, I'm just being clear, we want it struck through. Gotta pick it up.
So, it takes a while? Okay.
So parking?
The second one is parking. Um, so parking, we had, you know, quite, um, passionate discussions in, in different trends of the market, how it, it will go in the future. But, um, the LDCC, um, proposed, um, ten percent of the required parking, um, to be compact, uh, with dimensions of eight by sixteen. So we are reducing the ten by twenty to nine by eighteen, that is gonna be the standard. And the nine by eighteen today is our compact. So the LDCC, um, uh, did not like the twenty-five percent reduced to ten percent, but they also, and it's not reflected here in the table, they wanted ten percent of the parking standards to be large, you know, parking spaces, which would be then the ten by twenty of today. Um, and LPA, uh, wanted to remove percentage for compact, compact spaces. They only wanted the, you know, the, uh, the nine by eighteen.
So the LDCC is basically saying, they're putting a cap on the compact spaces of ten percent?
Yes, maximum of, yeah, ten percent of compact, yeah, but they also wanted, they also were concerned about the large cars. So they wanted ten percent also of a requirement for, um, parking spaces of ten by twenty, yeah. So in this, I'm, I'm just have here, and I, I got that from, um, um, research showing, you know, the US...
I think Clay was kidding on that one. So I, I gotta go with LPA.
So the US standard, um, um, large space is nine by twenty. Today, ours is ten by twenty, and the compact is eight by sixteen, which is what we are proposing for the compact.
So, so basically, a maximum of ten percent would be the compact, but then the rest would be standard?
Standard, but the LDCC also wanted ten percent for the large ones.
Yeah, we don't need ten percent for the large. I mean, I, I drive a large vehicle, but I, I can fit in the standard space.
We gotta give you a five of that, man.
That's awesome. You have skills.
The nine by eighteen, nine by eighteen.
He could do it. I, I see you park in a tiny little parking garage backing in. It's impressive.
So are you the LPA or the LDCC?
LDCC.
Wait, no, you're the other way, you're LPA.
No, he's LDCC, he's, he wants the ten percent for compact.
You're LPA.
And, um...
I want no regulations at all for parking. So which ones, they both, I think removing the percentage for LPA is...
Councilmember Britton?
Well, the LPA is removing the percentage, but what's the standard lot size? Ten by eighteen?
They only want the i- nine by eighteen.
Nine by eighteen?
Yeah, so I'll, if you deal with the LPA the way I understand it is, all those spaces in the parking lot will be nine by eighteen.
Yeah, they didn't, they thought...
Or larger if they want, these are the minimum requirements.
It could be bigger.
Yeah.
They didn't want anything smaller.
Smaller, they thought nine by eighteen, which is the compact today, is already going too far, so they said...
Most cars fit in a compact space.
But the most, the most choice for the property owner is with LPA. Is that not, am I understanding this incorrectly? I think...
It's with LDCC.
The most choices.
Yeah, because LPA wouldn't let you have any compact spaces.
Right.
LDCC would let you have ten percent of them being compact, so smaller than what they would let you.
Yeah.
So they would have, they would have the smaller spaces, which means they could get more spaces in a desired part of land, which would get them to their code.
Um, can I, I mean, I honestly would go to LDCC here, and I would up from ten percent. I would, I mean, I would go to twenty percent, I don't...
No, I like the ten percent.
You'd go with ten?
I like twenty-five.
Yeah, I, I would go with ten percent.
Okay, well, I'm with LDCC.
Anybody, anybody else twenty-five? You could allow it to go up to twenty-five percent in your target areas, and ten percent citywide.
See, I like that.
There you go, that's...
I like that.
They all live with that?
Twenty-five is, is the percentage today for compact.
Right, so we'd be reducing it with this.
This one is reducing to ten percent.
I'm with the LPA one.
I think my syntax is not understanding the words in the LPA, so I'll just, like, put that out there. If you remove the percentage requirements, it sounds like you can have one hundred percent be compact spaces in the LPA consensus.
No, the LPA is saying, the compact today...
Oh, they want today's compact size.
Is gonna be the, the standard, and that's it. We are not giving up any smaller space. Nine by eighteen is the most we can go. Nine by eighteen.
Okay.
Not eight by sixteen, so they did not want to have additional compact.
Understood, gotcha.
So, would get, guys are consensus, the three of you, the LDCC?
I'm going with LDCC. I, I think we can have some compact spaces in there, and then that way it'll allow for, for, for more, more parking if you drive a smaller vehicle.
Are you good with twenty-five percent on the core, or you just want it ten across the board?
I have ten, ten.
Come on, I'm just twenty-five, let, let the landowner choose.
You guys good with that, ten?
Yeah.
Are you, are you up for twenty-five?
No, I was in, I was in the LPA, I wasn't looking for any...
Well, you're looking for big spots, huh?
Alright, so LDCC...
So LDCC, ten percent.
LDCC, okay.
Can I just add that the oversized, um, spaces that you're not seeing on here, there's a minimum required percentage of ten percent. So are you all okay with the required?
LDCC or LPA?
This is LDCC. They want oversized parking spaces, not to accommodate the trucks.
Oh, I thought you said the LPA wanted oversized parking spaces.
No, LDCC.
No, it's the LDCC.
And I apologize, 'cause it didn't, uh, was not translated in the non-consensus table.
I don't know why we would require oversized parking.
For those large trucks.
Yeah, I think...
Yeah, but large trucks fit in normal cars.
Councilmember Pollak, who owns the big cars, said he gave up that.
'Cause he's got more driving skills than Botafur.
I just drive better.
Nine by eighteen, it is, and with the...
So you guys are good with that, too?
I would take that out.
Yeah, take out the, the oversized spaces, just, just, ten percent can be compact, up to ten percent can be compact.
So what's written, knock the extra stuff?
Yeah, no oversized.
No oversized.
Or oversized isn't required, I mean, they can, they can...
They can provide if they want to, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, the new items. Um, one language that was removed from the, um, draft is the Land Use Administrator Authority to, uh, refer applications to city council, and staff is asking that language to be brought back. We rarely use that, but it's just, um, an option that if needed, then the Land Use Administrator could, um, take an application to city council for consideration.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I mean, if, if it seems like it's a contentious item, and, you know, and the Land Use Administrator sees that, then bring it to city council, 'cause it could end up there as a, in, in a, um, dispute or appeal, yeah.
Appeal. Agreed.
Okay.
Consensus?
Yep.
Okay. Um, the second one, um, um, we have, we added, um, a public outreach, uh, process, and I can try to find here the language.
It was like five hundred feet, um, that they had to reach out to the neighboring person.
To specific applications.
They had to mail them a notification, and then if, if required to have a meeting.
It's not a required...
If, if required, yeah.
And, but then if they did have the meeting, they had to, like, report back.
Yeah, if there is, there are standards...
Or sorry, optional, it was optional if they wanted to do a community, but they had to notify them.
And these are applications that are not necessarily public hearing process. So we have for, um, um, future land use map amendments, zoning map amendments, these are a public hearing process, special exception orders as well, but preliminary subdivision plans, and then we are adding masterland use plans, um, to those applications, do not require a public hearing. So this is different than a public hearing, 'cause we would only advertise when the item is ready to reach council and the boards. Um, but this would be required thirty, the applicant will have to notify thirty days after the application is, um, deemed to be sufficient, so in the beginning of the process, so that, you know, um, residents could, um, provide their, um...
Yeah, I, I, I'm fine with it.
No, I'm not.
Okay.
I like it, too.
I think that that's, that's unduly burdensome on the, on the applicant. I, I think that, I mean, the, the signs when the, when it's a public hearing, I think those are sufficient. I don't think they need to, to, to send out notifications right, right after they, they submit their application. I think, I think that's, that's too burdensome on the applicant. Um, especially, you know, going through and trying to find all the property owners and everything else, I, I don't, I don't see that that's necessary.
Well, that, that can be done with a property appraiser, right? You could just say, hey, I'd like to, I mean, like, if you're a real estate person, you know how to, like, go kind of outline and say, here's my five hundred feet thing where I could have to email, or, you know...
Yeah, that's how we do.
Yeah, it's, it's easy.
This, this gets back to the, the land rights issue. I mean, they, if they're following the rules and they're, and they're within their rights to do what they need to do on their land, I mean, the, you know, I mean, at the pu- the public hearing sign, the, 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 the adjacent property owners can come to city council and, you know, and, and speak at the, at the public hearing, but to, to do that to a, you know, a property owner that's within their rights on their property, that's...
So where did this come from?
So this came from, um, the Chaloni process, right, where the PSP...
But the idea to do this was this LDCC, the LPA, how, how, where were they on this?
Orange County does this.
Uh, there are a lot of other municipalities do that, several of our cities do this. They require, in fact, uh, one, Sanford, requires that when you come before LPA, you have to present a certificate, that you held a meeting, and who attended, and, and what the result was.
But both, but how were both the committees about this? The LDCC and the LPA, what, did they have an opinion on this?
They, they both, um, voted for, with, with, with the language as, as written. The only thing that we are adding now, um, is the masterland use plan, because it's also a, a, a process that has their own development agreements, so we thought that that would be also subject to, uh, the same kind of, you know, um, issues that, um, a PSP would bring. Uh, and in the past, I mean, residents many times come for a PSP, and they say, we were not, never notified, well, there is no public hearing process for a, a PSP, so this would be a way to be more transparent. They don't need to reach consensus, this is just an opportunity to alert the residents that this is coming, if there are men, uh, conflicts that can be resolved, the process will, will take care of that.
I don't, I don't have a problem with notifying people, but the fourth bullet, notifications must be sent thirty days after the application is determined to be sufficient. Is there no way to say it can be sent as soon as the application's sufficient? 'Cause it doesn't have backup a project by, like, thirty days, before it can go to council?
It should be within thirty days, is what it should say.
With, within thirty days, um, yeah, it's within thirty days. I think that's how it's written, yeah.
Is that what it says, though? 'Cause I don't want someone to have to wait thirty days to notify people.
No, 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 I think it's within thirty days.
Just wanna make sure we're not backing projects up a month.
What page is that on, roughly?
If not, we can change, but the idea was to...
Make sure it's sufficient, then notify them.
I'm looking at page twenty-four, it's under number one applicability, and it says within thirty days.
Within thirty days, so that was the...
But I'm still for removing it, but I think I'm in the minority.
That's fine, Councilmember Britton?
Uh, we can leave it, I thought we already had this. I know we did this in, in the past, but maybe...
Well, we definitely had issues come up.
We, you, I think you were the one that raised that some years ago, it did not pass back then.
So you're good?
Leave it, yeah.
Alright, so we're good with this?
Okay. Let's go back where we were. Um, then, another item that came up in the last, um, LDCC meeting was allowing R three, which is, you know, a zoning district that usually is associated with the high-density residential future land use, um, to, uh, be also permissible under middle, uh, uh, medium-density residential, MDR. And, um, and if that is the case, so R three allows, uh, multifamily. And of course, it has to meet density. So if, if it meets density, and you, um, you can allow multifamily, but a multifamily would be, um, limited to a height that keeps the same character of, uh, single-family and duplexes, so thirty-five feet in height. And this was a discussion that was brought, uh, with a, a pre-op that we had sometime ag... And this was a discussion that was brought with a pre-app that we had some time ago and you probably remember the case. And I have here the, the, the pre-app. It's this one. And it's a property next to Pine Avenue, the Jones property, that he has large lots that do not front, they are landlocked lots today. And they, the property owner owns those two lots and the lot in front that gives the frontage to Pine Avenue. And in that first lot, he has already built a townhome duplex. And he's, he brought this, this plan for us, but it would not meet the requirements for R2 because it would be multifamily, so several units in one lot. He could meet density, but he could not meet the typology that is not allowed in.
Could not meet the what?
The typology, the multifamily. Multifamily is not allowed in, in R2. So if we allow this to be R3, they, he will have to rezone it to R3 and multifamily is allowed, but then we would say multifamily in R3 that has a medium density residential future land use has to be limited, cannot be a vertical multifamily, can be a horizontal multifamily. The argument was that this would help with the missing middle.
It looks like it does exactly that. I, I think this is a simple, simple yes on my end.
Yes on my end.
Yes?
All right, you have a consensus.
Okay. Okay, so we, we close this one. So this was brought by the mayor with the discussion of the right of way, if it would be possible to just accept dedication of pavement and not sidewalks. I don't know how that would work and I replied back to the mayor, I don't know if that would work and how could that work? Cause usually we accept, you know, the whole right of way. And I would imagine that also private, oh, property owners will have issues having the liability of a public, you know.
Yeah, I, I understand your concern with the cost, but I think that, that's gonna be difficult to do.
I, I agree, I think it's gonna be difficult. Okay.
I think you can look at it through the lens of if you're willing to accept streets maintenance, you should be willing to accept people on foot.
Where the people walk, yeah.
Right? So they, they're people too.
And I would also make sure, you know, we have some responsibility for ADU compliance and all that.
Correct.
I think your, your mic is off.
Well, one of the things too, Council, nine times out of 10, the stormwater utility is underneath the sidewalk. And so it's, the sidewalk is within that right of way. And a lot of times the water and sewer lines are underneath the sidewalk. Sometimes they're underneath the travel lanes, but we do try to push them over underneath the sidewalk so that we don't have to tear up the road in order to do maintenance or to replace a line. So that, that's the difficulty in all of it. We're gonna have some form of an easement over it anyway for us to be able to get in there and get to the utility, get to the stormwater and everything. So that's why normally everything's just sort of contained within the right of way.
Okay, what's the next one here?
The next one is to extend, this was also brought in the last LDCC meeting, to extend the CA's zoning district to, right now it's in between only the two downtown cores. So the old downtown and the new downtown. And the proposal was to move north of the downtown, old downtown, the water tower district up to Magnolia. So that.
What does CA stand for again?
It's Central Avenue.
Okay, the district for extra.
It's the commercial, more, you know, commercial character along Central.
I think that makes sense. It's where it naturally is already.
Right.
Yeah, that would be from Franklin to Magnolia.
Yeah, it, it's, it's no different than what we have now. From Franklin to Magnolia, Magnolia, before we did the comp plan in 22, Franklin to Magnolia had office land use and, but my predecessors decided that they wouldn't change the zoning so that people had to come in for a zoning change. And we've been lot by lot changing it to OC, office commercial zoning, even though there's still some up there that front on Central Avenue that have R1. And so one of the things that, so it actually what I think, my, my opinion is, is that any of the lots that are fronting on Central Avenue, we should allow that to happen. But we need to do both, both sides of Magnolia is what we need to do because that's how it is currently. So if you said from Magnolia down to Franklin, then at Franklin Street, that's where Downtown Core picks up. You know, and then you, once you cross 419 and you get past the trail, then, you know, Central Avenue would pick back up again.
To Mitchell Hammock.
And head toward Mitchell Hammock. So, and it would just be the lots that front, that front on it. I, I would recommend we do it.
I'm, I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
I guess of both sides of Magnolia Street right now are like primarily residential.
There's one at the corner.
I know the corner is not that lot.
The corner's not, right. So like I said, it would just be those that are fronting on Central. Wouldn't be.
Just the one, okay, so not all the way down Magnolia, just, okay, okay, I'm good with that.
Do we at least go to Franklin right now?
No, you're saying go all the way to Mitchell Hammock.
Between Franklin and Magnolia, that's where the Central Avenue would come in.
Extend it to that?
Yeah.
We are gonna show the zoning map.
The Downtown Core would stay there.
Yeah, map would be good. All right, I just wanted to clarify real quick. There is a property here that unless we create a split zoning aligning with the back of this R1 property, we'd be granting CA zoning to this entire site as well as, as this one, which I don't think is as big of a problem. But would you be open to creating a zoning line here?
No.
Or should we leave this one out?
It should be the whole thing because we're popping Franklin Street through and there's, that's gonna be paved all the way through there anyway.
Perfect, okay, so this is the only one that will go this deep as CA. The rest of them will just address the properties that front.
Line the street.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Now, and is it all the way down, is it all the way down Central to Mitchell Hammock as well?
Right.
So when you pass.
Yeah, once you get past the Downtown Core.
And then it's back up.
The pink is existing CA.
Perfect, okay. That works.
Okay.
I have to, I have to, I have to. I was searching for it, okay. Okay, the other item, and we are jumping all over the code, but these are issues that we needed direction, is on the material, on the architectural. So we kept the material requirement for 20% of brick and stone and 10% of, 20% for primary facades and 10% for secondary facades with the additional language that unless the applicant can demonstrate that the materials being proposed are consistent with the architectural style of the proposed building. And I don't know if you remember the Lawton office that we had to require, it was kind of, did not help in, in a way, the architecture of the building because it was not what they are proposing. So that would alleviate that issue. I mean, if you're proposing something that is consistent with the style that you are trying to, you know, get done, then we will be fine deviating. And we can even put language that this would not be considered deviation.
So you're, you're saying you want to add what's in quotation marks here?
Yes, this is staff's recommendation.
My concern with saying you can deviate if we agree that you're doing something pretty is that there's a great diversity in what people consider beautiful.
Yeah, but I mean, I mean, in the, in the case of, of Lawton Orthodontics, they were trying to mirror the Lawton House and they couldn't because, because of that.
Yeah, it's not only beautiful, right? It says that if it's the style that you're proposing, if it makes sense within the style.
But what if your style is to have an unadorned block building and that is your preferred style? I don't think that.
It says unless the applicant can demonstrate that the materials being processed are consistent with the architectural style of the proposed building. So if they came in with a, a square building brick, then they have to demonstrate the materials proposed are consistent with architectural style of the proposed building.
Do you accept that I could want to have a completely unadorned, like, are you following me?
I know what you're saying, yes.
Okay, cause I.
A concrete block building that has no stucco on it, has no other type of material.
It's a blank art canvas. If that's my architectural preference, and I'm, I'm okay with that. So I would rather eliminate some of these standards and not try to regulate architecture quite as much.
So this only relates to material, right? I mean, if you bring a completely, I'm gonna say uninterested building, it would not pass the other requirements, either articulation, finestration, you know, so we have, we have other requirements in the code. This is just to address the issue of the material.
The coating of the outer layer.
Yes.
But it is, I, I just wanna make sure that we're all on board that you can have as a preference, an outer layer that is unadorned and we're not gonna say, well, that's not good enough for us.
No, but that wouldn't, that wouldn't meet the other requirement.
But it could, cause you could have some of the walls here and some of the walls there. You could move, you could make your unadorned walls work.
Is the, I see what you're saying. Is there a way to say you can have, it still has to be at least two different materials?
Well, like if it's, the Lawton House is one material and all these old buildings, if you're trying to duplicate an old look, well, you've got like your roof is one and then the siding is just one kind of siding.
I feel like there are more than two, one material.
So can we just say that it would require a deviation?
You can, yeah.
Well, but, but I mean, from what I understand, was, was Brett even offered a deviation for his property?
So at the time, I think the, the feeling was that not even a deviation would be acceptable because.
We had never done 100%.
100% deviation.
I put stone around the barn for this exact code requirement. And I had to pay to mitigate all these effects because of this code.
Right.
Because according to our code, my building was ugly. It is a wedding venue. It is not ugly.
I think.
So there has to be some kind of in-between that's not causing these mitigation punishments for things that are not ugly.
Right.
We would never use ugly, we was non-compliant, right? Cause sometimes it's not even ugly for us.
But our code is to make things not concrete buildings, which I was not. So, but it didn't allow for these one-off cases, right? So we do have a problem with our current code, but I don't know if this is the fix, but I think it's the right direction.
I'm, I'm not sure this is the fix either.
Now, we also have innovative design, right? So if you, if, if it's a Guggenheim museum comes to, you know, to the city, we have the option to say everything is off because this is an icon building that is bringing whatever. But it's, it's, it's subjective. I agree.
So Councilmember Tuckert, you were okay with this?
I see the problem of it all being 100% concrete, so I see that side, but I also see a problem with leaving it as it is. So I think this is a partial fix. I don't know that it's all the way. So, I mean, if there's a way to get closer to what we're looking for, maybe it's looking at more, some, some more options here? I don't, I don't know.
The, the problem you face is, is what you're saying though, is, is someone will come in because it's cheap to do all concrete block and someone will come in and, and.
And that's your architectural plan.
And push the, push the limits on it and then, and then you're left having to allow.
We also have prohibited materials. So we can also, you know, control the, the ones that we do not want.
Stucco is prohibited, right?
We have, we have 40% and 50% maximum requirements for stucco for primary and secondary facades.
Oh, so that's already in there.
I'm, I'm not a fan of, well, I, I don't, I think I'm in the minority on this, but I, I am concerned that we have a lot of really expensive coating requirements and they don't always add value. And the thing that I think of most is when you're coming, when I come back from Metroplan, I always see that butterfly night, next to the D-Park. And it's painted on the side of a building that I think might just be nothing but block, but it's beautiful. And if it were any other material, you'd just cringe to think, well, I'm gonna paint over all this tile that I've coated the side of the building with and it, and it's a lost opportunity, so.
I don't totally disagree with that, but I.
So.
Let's go with this because of what you said with the prohibitive materials, I think we're, we're, we're good from that front.
All right.
I'm good with this.
We're good.
Good, okay. Moving on. There were, so this was all based on discussions we had today. Parking require.
Pleasure of me.
So we had a discussion with parking requirement for ADUs as accessory dwelling units in the target areas. So the target areas have less of, of requirements for parking space and did waive parking requirements for accessory dwelling units. And it was raised today, if that was, that should be the case, since we have accessory dwelling unit parking requirements for every other place in the city.
Yeah, I'd, I'd love to speak to that. So what we're trying to do with adding ADU allowances is to allow for a family to add an extra unit on the back of their property. And that can be for rental income, that could be for an aging parent, that could be for housing a student who needs a little bit more privacy in their own space. If you are an existing homeowner, your house is typically built to your setbacks, right? So to accommodate an extra parking space on your site makes it impossible to be eligible to do an ADU. And so while we understand citywide, there, there was a, a strong message that we wanted parking for ADUs, we pushed back for the target areas, which are supposed to be more urban, supposed to allow for this extra unit to happen, supposed to be area for the missing middle. We, we strongly believe that you're, you're not gonna see ADUs built if you're requiring a parking space in the target areas.
And I, I agree. I, I don't think it should be required.
I guess, hold on, here's my catch 22 here. So I agree with you outside of the target area because we have required two, sometimes three or four spaces are, are pretty consistently seen. And I, I know of some houses around here that could easily turn a spot they have on their current property into ADUs as is, and they have space for parking. But in our core areas, we're only requiring, we're switching our requirements, then instead of having two parking spots for households, it's one. So my concern is, okay, now we have the same unit outside of the area requires two or three or four, and now it only requires one, and then you also add an ADU. So now there's one spot for like potentially two living spaces.
So I hear that. And so my next question would be, and I think that you guys would be able to answer this, is are you open to allowing that parking space to be like within the required setback? So if they have a single car garage, could that?
Absolutely.
As long as that second space is in the driveway, does that count even if they're tandem spaced?
That would be fine with me.
They could.
But would that, would that?
It discourages it.
But would that violate our permeable ground requirements?
No, I'm talking about counting the driveway as a parking space as long as it's 18 and a half feet wide or long.
Most homes, a lot of homes use their driveways as their parking space, right? Cause they use the garage for something else, for storage. So parking spaces, driveways are used for parking. There is no problem with that.
Right, so what I'm saying is don't make it be an independent parking space. If there's a two-car garage that already exists for a single-family home in the target area and they're only required to have one space, that second garage space could count as this parking space.
Downtown neighborhood?
For target areas, yeah.
Because what are the target areas that would, the core doesn't have single family?
I'm really thinking about downtown neighborhood, mostly, and CA if they're in Central Avenue.
Are you still okay with no parking?
I know.
I'm okay with no parking.
I'm also okay with no parking.
No parking requirement. Let the market dictate it. If people aren't buying them, then they'll, they'll figure out a way to make it work.
This is one of, my, my, my concern about this is the ADU sitting in the back. Okay, so we gotta put a parking space on the property somewhere.
We don't, we don't have to though, that's what we're saying, right?
So if the ADU sitting in the back and the parking space is in the back, then you're adding, you're adding concrete pavement wherever that you wouldn't normally have. However, letting them park in the driveway, that's the natural parking area for that lot. No matter if it's in the downtown or if it's in just a normal residential neighborhood, the parking, most of our homes have two-car garages. The driveways, like, like Katie said, the driveways are usually about 16, 18 feet wide. You can set two cars there. And when you have a family that has three, four, or five drivers, then yes, some of them do end up in the road.
Right.
But the fact that, what I don't see feasible is making someone build a separate parking space to go into the back of the house in front of their-
Yeah, that's not what I'm meaning.
Might as well just let them park in the driveway and walk around.
No.
And that's only if they have a setback on the side that's enough to get a driveway back there to that space, right? And that's rare on an infill lot.
Very rare. So, I mean, might as well let them park on the driveway.
What you're describing, they do have a front yard, they could expand the existing driveway.
They could. They could decide, right?
But that's also not as very aesthetically pleasing or good for the environment, because you're removing open space, and now you have front yards full of concrete.
Well, if you make it permeable. Or semi-permeable.
So we've got two people who are cool with none. Are you still a nun?
I guess if, I mean, it kinda sounds like we already have more parking than we need in these spots, we just aren't counting garages or driveways.
Well, if you think about a single family, a single-family lot, three cars, like, three parking spaces.
But isn't there no single family in the core areas?
No, but I mean, if you're talking about an ADU outside the core areas.
Yeah, I wasn't worried about those. I was worried about the ones in the-
The target areas.
The target areas. Is what I'm saying, do they have driveways and garages in the core area?
Well, that's what I clarify. This is, because it's not gonna be for the downtown core, because we are not stimulating single-family homes there.
Okay.
And this only applies to single-family homes. So it's gonna be to the downtown neighborhood.
And Central Avenue.
And Central, which is the-
Can we, instead of just saying the target area, can we just say, no parking requirements for ADUs in the city?
We definitely can.
Yes!
That is gonna create issues in the neighborhoods, in the local streets, in the areas there are, you do not have, you cannot access-
Where would this create a situation? Because there's HOAs all over the places where it would create a situation. And I'm thinking about the non-HOA areas where this is even hypothetically possible, and the roads are plenty wide, there's plenty of parking already. I can't imagine-
Well, HOAs can change their regulations to allow ADUs, and then we can have ADUs in areas that are none, do not have homeowners association, but still are very suburban in nature, that people have no way to move around than having a car. So the issue is that, do we want to densify without requiring the proper infrastructure for cars? If we were in a city with subway, with, you know, a lot of, you know, transit, yes, no problem, remove the parking requirements, but we are not there yet.
I say let the market drive it.
There's one other option that I could propose, and that would be to allow ADUs up to 500 square feet to go without a parking space, and over 500 square feet to 1,000 square feet to require a parking space. 500 square feet is pretty much a one-person unit, and when you're over that, you could have more of a family-type living situation, which could demand more traffic, just a thought.
Okay, I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
Perfect tapping.
Right. Cool.
Okay, you are all writing it down, right? So the second one here is the changeable copy sign. There was the questions today about why do we still have the black background, only one color, and maximum of twenty percent of changeable copy sign.
There's a story, right?
You remember that, right?
I know there's a story.
So-
The cross-life sign.
Oh, yeah.
So, interestingly, the boards still support that, so that's why, you know-
I've never supported that from the time it came to LPA.
So that's why we are bringing it up.
Both boards.
So the, both boards did not, you know, propose changes.
I'm fine with that.
Do we have a good reason? I mean, I understand there's one-offs, but we have-
What do you mean? You wanna have full color versus one color?
We have full color, and, I mean, like, Stenchham Elementary has a colored sign, and there's nothing wrong with it.
Oh, but it can happen at Stenchham, because it's not regulated by us, but by the county. Is that the deal?
Correct.
But this also pertains to gas station signs, where they have the green diesel, the blue ethanol, or the white ethanol, and the red gasoline. And if you notice, Wawa's is all red, and every other Wawa's around has the different colors to delineate it. And it's already being violated at some of the new, the gas stations that have improved their signs. So it's-
But that's what I'm saying.
So I don't think, I think this needs to go away permanently.
Oh, I think she's saying it goes away too. I thought you were saying the opposite thing.
No, I'm saying, let them have color.
Let them have, let them have color.
I don't wanna regulate away joy on our time.
Alright, we got consensus, you got color. Let's move on.
We keep the twenty percent?
I thought you were opposites.
What are we agreeing upon?
Wait, no, just get rid of it. Just make it color. Great?
Yeah. Doesn't have to be black background. This is gonna make the Methodist Church so happy. Can they, can they build their changeable copy sign now, under how it's written now? I haven't gone double-checked.
Okay, I don't wanna get off-
Yeah, let's not keep going off the tangent. We'll be here all night.
No, so, just let them, let them have full color.
Full color, but keep the twenty percent of the, no?
Twenty percent of what?
The sign.
So it's the maximum changeable copy is limited to twenty percent of the sign area.
That I think is fair. So eighty percent is static, and then twenty percent can be a scrolling, flashing.
Okay.
Here's our gas prices.
Okay.
And no blank background, and no one color.
Can we also somehow limit the flashy flash-ness of it?
We have one, right? We went through this recently. You can only cycle four seconds at a time or something.
Okay, is this, this is in there already?
It's already there.
It's in there.
But it's one color at a time.
I haven't read that part.
Now I can retire in peace.
See, I brought it up just for you. Okay.
We are getting rid of the black background, right? As well? Okay.
Okay, moving on, street trees.
Street trees, and I think I checked with Greg, so he was okay with that. Street trees should count as replacement trees.
Inches, though. Remember, we're getting away from the terminology of replacement trees.
Everything is going to be inches, yeah.
Okay, but the inches you put in on the street, I think should be counted. That was my comment there.
For replacement.
So they count as required inches?
Correct.
So, it's not even street trees in general, it's required trees should be counted as replacement.
They are ready.
Correct.
So, this is the new code. Not the existing code, does not count.
Right.
The proposed code, yes.
Okay, so they're not in addition to, they're, they count towards-
Currently, it says in the new code, they don't count. So I was saying they should count.
So this is how, this is how-
Anything required should count towards replacement.
Yes.
Yeah. This is how we have, you know, written. So it's missing the champion trees there.
What pages are we in on this?
We are in page-
We're going all over the first slide.
Two eight seven.
Two eight seven, okay.
No rhyme or reason.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're kinda going all over.
Two eight seven through, two eight nine, but it may not be the-
I'm seeing two thirty-six on my end.
Two thirty-six. Oh, are you doing pages, the little gray box pages? That's what I'm looking for.
Two eight seven through two eight nine, I think.
It's in a lot of places where it says this, by the way.
Yeah, I'm Ctrl-F-ing it, and it's all over the place. Oh, yeah, that's, you can have a little funny off.
So the change that we have now is that every lot would have to show their survey, and we have percentages.
Okay, page two eleven.
Oh, my goodness.
It says, "Street trees shall not count towards the minimum requirement."
Right, we're gonna correct that.
Yeah, but that's what I brought up there. Just two eleven.
And on all of this tree stuff, I think the spot we were trying to get to when this came up a couple meetings ago is, it does not feel fair for somebody to be, to have to plant a different number of trees or pay a penalty if you happen to have bought a grove to develop versus a virgin forest. Like, I get that they're different things, but by pure luck of the draw, like, if you're the unluck, you know, I got an air quote unlucky person to get the one that has heritage trees, then you have to, you get fined and penalized.
You get to decide what land you buy. You don't just happen upon it.
Yeah, but, so you, then we would discourage people, like, we penalize people for buying land that is not a grove. So we would, I guess we would incentivize all the grove land to be built on first, but then when that ceases to exist and is no longer a choice, then I guess you could say, oh, well, you could choose not to buy there and build it, and you just, this is the price to develop in Oviedo. We're gonna punish you in a way that people who have grows were not punished.
We're punishing people for cutting down big trees. That's the bottom line. It's not about what land you buy. It's about cutting down trees that have been alive for fifty, sixty, seventy years that can't be replaced by planting two-and-a-half caliber trees.
I totally get that. I'm reforesting my backyard. It used to be a grove, it was completely empty. Is there a mechanism?
You're reducing the value of your property.
I am, I'm reducing the value of my property by allowing the trees to continue to grow. So if I continue to let the trees in my backyard grow such that they become forty years old, but you're adding to the quality of life.
What is the question? Oh, Harris, don't tell me you're gonna show me a picture of a tree.
I think I can say it pretty easy. Should street, should trees count as replacement trees?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
That's what I, that's what I brought up.
Okay.
Yes, that's what I brought up, that they should.
Do you have any other questions? Do you want us to-
You guys went way off the topic.
But this is a big issue.
But we still need to address, so Mr. Axel did bring something up on the trees, and I'm trying to-
Figure out where it is.
Figure out where it is.
Ninety-six?
What page is that?
He said fifteen, it was section fifteen, and what would fifteen fifteen two be?
It's two, it's page two eighty-seven.
Two eighty-seven.
And two eighty-nine.
Two eighty-seven.
And this may not be exactly how, you know, we are showing here. Do you, should we show the language? Do you wanna see the language?
I can make this big, two eighty-seven, I went too far.
Or, this is kind of the summary, but I can show the language as it is. So with the boards, one question that we asked, and they all said yes to this question, is that should we ask for restoration? You know, should the city ask for restoration if you're removing trees when you're developing? And the answer was yes. So if-
From both boards?
Both boards.
Okay.
And Mr. Axel said yes to that question, too, if I'm not mistaken. So the question is really, what is the formula that would be a fair, you know, proposition? Before, the minimum requirement was based on a future type of development, and we did not want, it was not equitable, equitable, right? Because you have different, if you're building a townhome, if you're building, you know, commercial, the requirements would be different. So we established something that is related to the canopy that you had on site. So when you bought the site, and every site will have to account for a percentage in the, by inches of, and we established that fifteen percent of the inches between those ranges of eight inch to eighteen inches in caliper.
So are we measuring based on the time the person who is clearing the land purchased it? Because in that case, I can let my canopy grow, and it's no problem. I can go back to ground zero at any time with no, with zero replacements.
When you develop, you're gonna show the survey, what you have on site.
So it's not at the time you purchase the land?
No.
Okay.
It's when you're gonna develop, right? You show what is the survey you already have, and we're saying, this is what you should account for. Fifteen percent, twenty percent, and thirty percent of those ranges. And we made some different simulations. And then, to account for those, the inches that you come up in the end, you can count the trees you preserve on site, and any landscape trees, any minimum required trees, and now also street trees would count for those. If you have, still have a balance to account for, then you either plant additional trees on site, or you paint to the tree bank, or we allowed, and there's, you know, also suggestion to plant on the street, on public land, if there is, if there's a park that needs, you know, trees, then you can plant elsewhere.
Is the only difference between the current and what is proposed, that street trees now count towards the requirement?
No.
No, all replacement trees count.
It's that, and how we calculate the replacement is different, that we are also including landscape, minimum landscape requirements as part of the mitigation. So trees that you will-
So all trees count?
Or any new tree counts, and any preserved trees count.
So, what is Mr. Axel's concern?
Let him say what is his concern. I think it's that he still, he still may have to compensate.
I know, but I think it has to do with the inches.
He doesn't.
Certainly.
David Axel, Axel Real Estate, seventeen fifty-seven West Broadway Street, Oviedo. So yes, the staff is accurate, that I feel there should be some requirement. Absolutely, I agreed with that. The issue here is, while I may have disagreed in the, with the interpretation of the code in the past, there was a cap. This eliminates the cap and puts in place a percentage. So very simply, like's been asserted here, if you happen to have a parcel with larger trees, you will be unequally treated compared to the person that has fewer trees. So it's putting the burden, presumably for the public benefit, on the private few with bigger trees. It's exactly the formulation, without percentages, I'll give you, but it's exactly the formulation that the US Sixth District Court of Appeals determined was unconstitutional. I think that's a mistake. When we looked at this, and we went through these scenarios quite a bit, the example that popped up was the Beazer Homes Town Home Subdivision, which happened to have large trees. And the burden was well over a hundred grand would have been applied to that property, and the cap, even though in my view, the cap's been applied in a way I don't think the code's written, we're not talking about that anymore, the cap would be gone. So someone with larger trees bears an unequal burden. So the simple question is, does the city of Oviedo and the public at large own those privately-owned trees that are part of that real estate? You're confiscating their money. You're saying, those trees benefited me, you're taking them away, but there's no scientific basis at all for that. And that's what was determined by the US Sixth District Court of Appeals. Inches by inches, it's not the quality of the trees, it's not their environmental benefit, it's not the environmental degradation, and you're not counting what you're planting. Everybody should be required, in my view, to plant the same. I was supportive of some mechanism to make people think about it a little bit. We all like trees, we all like to save trees, but the idea that you have a zoning that you're gonna allow, and a use that you're gonna allow, and a density that you're gonna allow, except you must be punished because there's larger trees, and the idea that you don't have to buy it, well, what if you already own it? You're being screwed, and it's that simple. So at some point in time, when the heavy-hit party comes in and has their project come forward, and they don't like this math, if they're willing to go through the burden of legal action, you're gonna probably lose, because it's already been something that's gone, not this particular case, but this was a referenced case when Pacific Legal went to the Supreme Court about legislative exactions and got a nine-nothing decision on sheets. I think you're marching into dangerous territory to not have a cap. Now, you all heard when we were here about Sugar Mill, which I happen to own, it's gonna fare better under the new code. Why is the interesting question? Most of the trees are smaller caliber, so it's gonna fare better, and it's okay. So I'm not here about a particular piece of property. I think it's a dangerous way to go, and that's, that's my concern with it, that's simple.
It goes back to the question, should we require or not, right? Because if we are okay requiring, then it's really trying to find to, what is the best formula? Now, it will all, always hit different properties differently, because they have a different, you know, combination of trees, right? The canopy's gonna be different, the project is gonna be different. Some preserve trees, some have that, you know, that target, right, to preserve trees. Some remove all the trees, and we are talking hundreds of trees.
When we tried to preserve the trees at Evan Square...
Didn't work.
It didn't work.
Well, that was one case, right?
And did they ever have to pay for that tree after that?
Yeah, we made them pay, didn't we?
We, yeah, we had to go through a process, yeah.
Seven or eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, we had to go through the process.
In the Supreme Court case, what was the resolution?
I am not...
The formula didn't work, but did they come up with a resolution, a new formula? If you know, Mr. Hall?
The case was cited when something went to the Supreme Court. It was US Sixth District Court of Appeals, and David Hall will tell you, and he's told our committee, that might not apply in Florida specifically. But quite frankly, if a panel of judges in, in, you know, a district that serves Michigan found something to be unconstitutional based on federal law, I don't know how that would suddenly be different here if someone challenges this. So this particular issue didn't go to the Supreme Court. The result was, the town of Canton, Michigan, had to give the money back. It's that simple. It also went to the Michigan Supreme Court.
Maybe this isn't the right way, but what is the right way?
So to me, the percentage was a mechanism to make the pain less. But the other mechanism, which I believe the staff didn't like, was to very simply have a cap. If you're required, as a type of land use in some table, and I forget which table it is, twelve, one, or whatever it is, to have fifteen trees an acre, or twelve trees an acre, then you shouldn't be required to plant more than twenty-four. And you should count all the trees, every single tree, including street trees, which has been provided today. That way, there's still a mechanism. Now, I think the, the staff view, not to put words in their mouth, will be, that's not enough teeth to make people try to save these trees. But the simple fact of life is, in modern dense development, which you're trying to encourage, it's extremely difficult to save trees with all the grading requirements and all the other requirements.
That is true.
It's really, really hard. So someone is gonna get hammered by this.
So we need to come up with a number for a cap?
Not necessarily.
Well, you need to do what you want to do, and that's where I came from.
The percentage that we are proposing is the cap.
This is a very interesting case. I think, is, can we punt on this until Mr. Hall can get a little bit more familiar with it?
Yeah, well, I am familiar, it's Canton case, Canton, Michigan. It's Sixth Circuit, which is Michigan, Ohio, Kentucky, and Tennessee. The court held there, their holding was, the city doesn't have the right to regulate trees because they're private property.
Yeah, I like, I'm looking a little summary, and I want to go read in more detail.
Instead of punting on it, can we agree to this and then come back and determine if there needs to be a difference in the cap, or, or if it's, or you can look it up and see if, if that would apply to, that they're private property?
As far as I, as far as I've been able to found, this, this is a case, like in other cases. I mean, this case, they said, trees are private property, you can't regulate them.
And was this federal or state or local?
This was federal, Federal Court of Appeals, Sixth District. Like I said, it applies to Michigan, Ohio, Tennessee, and Kentucky, no other jurisdiction.
But what hap...
We're not bound by that case.
But there, but there is, it was interesting in that they, a hundred trees were in the way of a drainage ditch or something, so they removed it for a specific purpose. So I mean, I think there may be more nuance there than that we are aware of.
So the idea is that, in urban areas, you're going to densify, right? You're going to destroy trees, and then the city is going to balance out minimally. We do not compensate the same number of trees, right? You see here, you're just, you're, this is a cap, fifteen percent of the trees.
You get how this makes me want to chop down the trees in my backyard before they get big enough to count though, right? Like, that, that creates an anti-incentive for people. I know, like, the thought has actually crossed my mind, but, you know, I don't have any intention of developing back there, but I've got an acre. And I think it creates a bad, I think it has the opposite effect by accident. Because if you remember when Stonehill or whatever came in, Mr. Klontz came in and he said, I remember when I was little, and they had aerials, there were no trees here. This was completely reforested, and we dinged them real bad on clearing it, which, you know, under our code, that's what the code was, but I'm not sure if people are starting to get savvy enough that they think, well, someday, forty years from now, people are gonna say, I got this giant tree because I irrigated my backyard, oh, I didn't irrigate my backyard, but, you know, if you did, you know, my parents had trees that were this big around, that were thirty years old.
So I just, regionally, this, first of all, this is a cap, so we did not remove a cap. We changed what the cap was to be more equitable with the type of development. Secondly, there are multiple ways to mitigate, right? So paying if he is one of them, looking at other opportunities to benefit the city in other ways is another one, increasing the size of trees that you're planting is another one, and planting more trees is another one, right? So there's four different options for alleviating your mitigation responsibilities. I can't speak to any type of legal issues, I'm certainly not a constitutional scholar by any means, but I can tell you, regionally, in a survey of what all the other communities throughout pretty much the entire state of Florida are doing, is something similar to this, where the jurisdictions are looking to, to get compensation for the tree canopy, because it is something that benefits more than just the single parcel owner. However, however they define that, I'm not an attorney, but this is not an unusual practice.
It's a, it's a fundamental issue of whether or not the city values the tree canopy and wants to protect the tree canopy.
And the benefits that are associated with that.
So we're incentivizing protecting the tree canopy.
I don't think there's any, anybody saying we don't want to protect the trees. I think what the mayor's saying, and maybe it's probably because we want a fair way. We want to make sure it's equitable. We don't want to be subjected to a unequal treatment amongst clients. And like the mayor said, if you've got a vacant lot, an empty lot, cleared lot as opposed to a tree lot, it's gonna cost you more. And that's probably unequitable.
It's likely that that cleared lot already paid mitigation fees for clearing the lot.
Well, and by the way, that cleared lot and the tree lot, prior to this, and with this proposal, would, would behave the same. The vacant lot would not be required to have replacement trees, and the tree lot would. The difference is, is that prior, the cap was based off the required lot, or double the required lot trees. And so if you're an office, that's ten per an acre, and if you're multifamily, that's fifteen per an acre. And so that's kind of arbitrary in itself, in and of itself. And what this is trying to do is apply a percentage based off of what's out there in the field. There's a rational nexus between what it is that's there and what we're requiring for replacement, and that's what we're trying to achieve. And we, we feel like we came up to the proper percentage. I could show you the, some of the, we did ten test cases that compared what our proposal is compared to what the code requires right now. And the majority of times, the existing code actually comes to a far higher number than what this proposal does. The one that Mr. Axel has stated before is one of the higher cases that we had. And it's because it has large, or old-grown trees on the site.
And I just want to add that, at the LDCC meeting, Mr. Axel also raised placing a cap on the required number of trees. The LDCC did not agree with the cap. They wanted to go with what the staff was proposing, which is this, we had an Excel spreadsheet where we went through different scenarios with the LDCC as well, as well as LPA. And both boards decided to go with what staff was proposing instead.
Is there perhaps a hybrid way where we could allocate the requirement to meet the community's need and desire for a canopy to people who may have, like I may do, prevent my canopy from growing? So if you're a person who, in anticipation of someday developing, says, well, I'm just not gonna let my canopy grow, and you deprive the city of this for many decades, as you sit on this land and wait, keep it ugly and empty, maybe instead of just penalizing the people who have the trees already, by happenstance, we increase the tree code across the board equally for everyone. And then we have, instead of a pick-your-poison for people who happen to have virgin uncut forests or have allowed their grove to be reforested, then everybody will equally share in the communal good, because I agree it's a communal good, to add trees somewhere. And maybe nobody can meet the tree code completely on, on site, and maybe everybody should. I mean, I see, this is kind of weird, but like, why should only some people have to meet their requirement off-site?
I've lost you, I've lost your train of thought there.
Okay, so...
So where, where are we at with this? I mean, with whether or not we agree?
This is my, this is my thought process, is keep the same cap that we have, two times the required trees, but, but allow the replacement tree, or the replacement trees to, or, I'm sorry, the required trees to count as replacement trees. Because that's all I always wanted was the...
But this is not equitable, right?
It's a different code, we're doing inches instead of trees. So you can't, you have to, can't, big tree, big tree people are...
That is something you could do, you could just say you want to maintain the existing code, except change the, change the philosophy.
I don't want to do that.
No.
I like the...
I'm okay with this.
And you did say both the LDCC and LPA discussed this at length?
And there was no consensus, there was consensus on both boards on what we have.
If you think about this, and some of the Dr. Craig said, there is a form of a cap, and that, if you think about this, zero to eight inches, or zero to seven point nine-nine inches, there's no mitigation whatsoever. You can remove that tree and there's nothing. When you get to eight to eighteen inches, okay, you calculate the number of inches that those trees count.
Just keep them measured.
And then your replacement, if I understand this correctly, the replacement is only, is fifteen percent of those total inches.
Yeah, you can remove eighty-five percent of those inches.
And so it's fifteen percent. When you get bigger, yes, and our code has always been that way, the bigger the tree, that's more punitive. But at eighteen to thirty inches, calculate the number of inches, your cap is twenty percent.
Because how big, somebody show me how big around, like, this is like the pregnant person at, at the shower.
Think about Diana.
But is it, are we thinking, are we talking circumference of thirty inches?
No, diameter.
Diameter at breast height.
Okay.
Picture, you know, this high, it's, you know, that's twenty-four inches right there.
Okay, so if it's this...
The tree at the wedding barn is fifty-five inches, just for reference.
Okay.
So like, that's a substantial tree.
Yeah, it is.
That's a heritage tree. You know, so I mean, you do have a cap, in that your mitigation is only going to be up to that, whatever that percentage is. That's your cap. It's just, it all adds up. And then, if you take into account that all of your minimum required trees now count as mitigation toward that. So, I mean, the way, I'm still wrapping my head around it, but I do, I do agree that those percentages are the cap, but they cap the mitigation.
Okay.
Councilwoman Tucker, you're okay with this? Well, in the, in the land development code...
I don't have a better solution at the moment.
In the land development code, in the landscape section and all the other sections, caps the amount of required trees as well, right? So there is a, there is a cap in terms of what you're absolutely required to plant as a minimum requirement in a new development area. Councilwoman Britton?
I'm good with it.
All right, we're good, we got consensus.
For, for the record though, I, I think this case is problematic, and we should perhaps be prepared to revisit this.
So the other, the other request today was to have a list of trees, and we are going to discuss that as the adequate street trees, trees that should be adequate in, that could be used in lieu of requiring the expensive root barrier.
So I would look at it the other way, I would look at it as species of trees that should have a root barrier, right?
Because it's only one, right?
No, it's not only one, it's, it's definitely the Quercus, right? It's definitely Quercus virginiana, the live oak.
And that's a good point, that's perfect. That's the better way to look at it. If they require it, they have it, if they don't, they don't. I just didn't want to require them for trees that didn't need them.
Right. And I believe that we had in the code that there was a minimum width before that root barrier was gonna be required to begin with. And we also in the code put a list of trees in there that are adequate for five-foot spacing or five-foot, I don't think it was smaller, it was five-foot spacing, that shouldn't have any problems with, with, with deteriorating the hardscape around it. But I think it would be easy to come up with a list where you could say, you know, these five canopy trees need to have root barrier.
Okay. But it would be nice to have a list that we can use, and public works can use, when they are replacing trees that are already creating issues with side, you know, with sidewalk, whatever, that, you know.
I'd also just like to clarify too, it's not, it's not a simple, this tree is the correct answer in every situation. It's going to be dependent upon the, the conditions that the tree is planted in, the health of the tree when it's planted, and the maintenance of that tree in perpetuity. So even a crepe myrtle, you know, here in central Florida, can get to, you know, a twenty-four or thirty-inch caliper and have some big roots. So it's, it's not, there's, there's some nuance here that we have to take into account.
And I think I pointed that out too, I was like, I know even some of these trees will cause some issues, but also some of the trees in these root barrier protections will also have some issues, right?
Yeah.
So I just didn't want to overdo it, I guess, if that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Is there something you need on that, or are we good with that?
I think...
Y'all good with that?
Good.
You're good with that, yeah.
So what, what, I want to make sure I understand the consensus.
They're supposed to come back and get a list of trees.
That require root barriers.
Correct.
Okay.
So it might not be all the trees.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was under the understanding that crepe myrtles, even though they get big, their root system doesn't spread out and damage roads.
Right, they're usually shallow.
And if they do, it's minimal.
Because they can say, get printed next to my, my pool, and it won't...
I just didn't want to require like, a small business who has to put in, let's say, ten trees, to have to do a ten thousand dollar root barrier system for every tree if it didn't necessarily need it.
Okay, what else we got?
We already talked about that. So this is something that I wanted to discuss, because it was discussed with the boards, having a mandatory public art contribution. We end up discussing that this should not be in the LDCC, but I wanted, since we discussed, and I wanted direction on that as well. So today we have that any capital improvement project from the city that is not infrastructure-related. So if you're building a new facility, one percent of the cost of the building should go to the public art fund up to fifty thousand, fifty thousand dollars. Many cities are adopting mandatory contribution from private development as well to fund public art, because usually it's not being funded from the general fund. So the discussion, initially we proposed the same thing, one percent, and the boards reached consensus to drop to zero point one percent to apply to any building permit in the city, and with no exclusion, except for public schools, because they do not have, they do not go through the building permit with us, and with no cap. So this would apply to...
That's just increasing the cost of construction.
It's zero point one percent, which is...
It's a shakedown still.
Yeah, it's still, well, but it's, but as we're talking about, you know, affordable housing, and then you increase the cost of construction, that's counterintuitive.
But let's see how much that is. And that was discussed, and the board said, this would be fair, everybody would pay, and it's zero point one percent. So if you have a twenty thousand dollar building permit valuation, you would contribute twenty dollars. If you have, you know...
Five thousand for a five million dollar building.
Yeah, so it's not going to be, and even, you know, all, all the developers from the board thought that this would be a fair contribution if we value public art, if we're going to have a city that, you know, that invests in public art, and if we're not gonna get from the general fund, from taxpayer dollars...
This started at like, two percent, right? No, it was only one.
No, it started as one percent.
So we went from one percent to point one.
To zero point one, yeah.
But, so is public art still gonna be a mitigating of mitigation?
Mitigation is an option, right? So I can mitigate deviation and an offer, you know, money to the public art. This would be mandatory, so this would be like a flow of money coming to the public art board every month, and it would be, you know...
It becomes an impact fee for public art.
Yeah, a public art impact, we should call it that, just call it a public art impact fee.
Well, it's a mandatory contribution.
I'm just...
That's valid observation.
Point, point one percent, I would say I'd be okay with point one percent, because then if you need it for a mitigation. So if you want to mitigate using public art, then you, you apply the point one percent.
Or maybe something bigger.
Or maybe something bigger.
There needs to be a formula.
That would not give, yeah, that is different.
So right now, what they put in the code to change the, to put a monetary value was five thousand dollars for each mitigation credit for public art? So this would be like substantially lower than that.
Yeah, so this would be, this would be cents in a lot of, you know, small building permits. And, and, but it would be from all building permits in the city, so we would get in volume. That, that is a way for everybody to contribute a little bit, and public art fund had a flow of cash to be able to fund the programs that we are planning to have.
Is that saying that's for the city too? We would be, we're one percent?
So one percent is already in the Code of Ordinances. When we created the public art program, that was already there. I mean, the city can, if we update the Code of Ordinances, we can rethink, you know, because I know when...
Does the city need to also pay a one percent premium on the, the police station of someday for public art?
So we can revisit that if we, if we bring in the Code of Ordinances amendment. But I wanted to have direction on that, because that was discussed, both boards recommended that change, but then we discussed that it's not really an LDCC matter. But then we discussed that it's not really an LDC matter. It would be better in the code of ordinances.
Yeah, so if the, if the city has to follow this, it's three hundred twenty thousand dollars. I was like, let me make sure I do it on a calculator.
No, it's capped at fifty, fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand, okay, well.
But still, if we change the code of ordinances, you have the ability to change that percentage as well.
Okay. I'm okay with this.
Are both boards fine with the point one? Both boards, LDCs?
Both boards were okay. Actually, they were the ones that proposed that.
And the art board. And the art board.
Oh, the art board probably wishes it was one.
Oh, the art board is happy as, as well, yes.
I'm not in favor of this, but I think I'm in the minority on this one too.
It's, it's so, so diminutive now, it's, it's like a.
So, are, do we have a consensus? Yes? Yes? Okay.
Thank you. I think I'm done with the, um, with what we had here to discuss, but we still have time to.
Well, we still need to discuss the, the sixteen to twenty-foot streetscapes.
Well, I got some things too.
Oh, sorry.
I think we all got some things. We might have to have another.
Yeah, I think, I think Mr. Axel, uh, uh, my notes show he's, he was four points, we discussed one, I think there's three points.
I, I can't hear you.
I think we do have, uh, my notes show Mr. Axel had four points. One was the trees, which you've already discussed, but I think there are three others. I would suggest we discuss them so we don't, at final hearing, we can discuss tonight, since this is a workshop.
Yeah, we can go ahead and do it.
So page sixteen is the first one with the deviations. So if anybody flipping. Can we pull the code up as we do this? You said page sixteen?
Yeah, two point seven.
Yeah. Can we make it bigger? Okay. Could I get a quick reminder of what the three questions are?
So the first one was, um, on page sixteen, two point seven, I believe.
The shall versus.
Well, no, it, it said, basically, if the deviation has no impact to neighboring properties, then there shouldn't.
It's, it's, it's a word choice. It should versus shall. It's right, it's right there on the bottom line of A, two point seven.
Yeah, so let me clarify, today it says may in the code, and we require to any deviation to propose a mitigation. So.
One thi- why, I think one of the things that has to do with the council is that if you see the bottom where it says except is provided in this LDC, and I think one of the things Mr. Axel pointed out was that those exceptions haven't been developed yet.
Well, we have some areas, so for instance, in the code today, street trees, if you cannot build them because you have utilities, that is not called a deviation. We accept that. So.
So if you can't do it, then under the current thing with the percentages, since you can't put it back, you have to pay into the tree fund? Or now it's truly deviation with no penalty?
I think today if it's, right, you cannot place on, because of utilities, either you place, um, on your property, if you have, you know, if you're providing shade to the sidewalk, or you.
Or you pay the fine and plant them someplace completely unrelated to you.
Okay, you pay into the tree bank, so it's a deviation.
So that, it, it, and that is what it is proposed to still be? Or do we know offhand?
Yeah, cause we still have street tree requirements, yes.
So I think he, the suggestion, I, I think it is perhaps unfair to require people to plant trees somewhere else if you can't plant them on your, well, maybe it's not unfair. I'll ponder through this.
Counsel, I believe the thing is, is that he want, if there was a situation where you were unable to mitigate, okay? And sometimes you have that with setback requirements, where you have a deviation for, especially side setbacks, you really don't have enough room in the side setback to truthfully mitigate, let's say, putting the air conditioning system in that side setback. And what I understand is that he was asking that, so because it says shall be required, mitigation shall be required, what happens if you have a case where you just physically can't put the mitigation in there? What happens then? There are cases, I've, I've been trying to, I, there have been a few cases where we said, mostly on single families, but we've said, there's just no way to do mitigation here. We looked at the lot, the lot characteristics, the way they were, the way that the building was structured. And a lot of times it's, you've got an existing building, uh, and, and it is, I hate to use the phrase, but it is what it is. And, uh, you don't have an opportunity, there's no opportunity to mitigate. It's just not doable, physically doable. And so the, his concern was that because it says shall, you have to do some form of mitigation now.
Oh, but is, even single family homes, they mitigate, for instance, in this case of the AC with landscape, right? We, so I think it's, I don't think it's, I don't know, it's more for commercial, it's more for the bigger mitigations that he would, I think he was mentioning.
If it doesn't impact the neighbors, I think is where he was going, then you shouldn't.
It gets into, uh, also subjective, right?
I think the whole intent of this code is to make it easier for people to comply with the code, so that we reduce the need for deviations. Um, in the case where there is a deviation, we have created a list of options that they can now, because a lot of times people don't know how they can, um, do mitigation. Um, so the best thing to do is to try to comply with the code. And if you cannot comply with the code, then you do have to go through the deviation process. And in that case, we have not denied a deviation because we do, we do requests for mitigations. I know in the past, and I know Mr. Cobb can speak to this, it was virtually impossible to get a deviation because you had to prove so many different things.
It was impossible to do a variance because you couldn't demonstrate hardship. That's why we went away from variances and went to the deviation process, so it would be based on design.
Well, and they could still appeal this and bring it to council, right, at some point?
They can always be done.
But Ms. Pierre is absolutely correct. I mean, the, the intent is to get compliance, right? We are also in this LDC, we are flexing a lot of the code, the standards. We are upgrading, updating the standards, right? Parking requirements, so all, all the deviations that would, um, apply to parking spaces, to, uh, we are helping them, you know? So, we are kind of flexing and making, you know, the standards more, um, adaptable to the, the, uh, existing conditions. So we should have less deviations being requested.
All right, I guess, what's the, what do you guys mean?
This is a shooter shell?
Mm-hmm. Is it? No, it's not. Can you elaborate?
Thank you, I don't want to have to call.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at this and it's not a shooter shell.
Dave Axel, Axel Real Estate, seventeen fifty-seven West Broadway Street, Suite One. So, in, in essence, I brought this up at the last meeting, and, and the issue is, we have a series of, because you have to choose numeric standards, some that don't fit all circumstances and may be relatively arbitrary. So, for example, I think was Mr. Curly's little half acre came in, where he shrunk setbacks. The deviation was, I think, more plantings. That's a, a deviation you could do, you're affecting the neighbor by shrinking the setbacks. The example of, of Sugar Mill, which came forward, in order to better preserve some wetlands and still have sufficient parking, there were a couple of different deviations. One was the size of the parking spaces, which is being changed now. Another one was the number of spaces in a row from ten to twelve. Well, that has absolutely no effect on a neighbor. The size of the parking spot has no effect on a neighbor. The, a number of spaces in a row has no effect on the neighbor. Either the, the, the deviation's warranted by the circumstances or it's not. The mitigation, it's hard to figure out, well, why should there be mitigation when you're not affecting the neighbor? And that's all I'm pointing out. So, I went, brought this up the other day. Uh, Deborah reminded me, we did talk about changing the may, which is fuzzy, to shall, which is required. Added that end of the sentence. The discussion was that either the consultant or staff would come back later, and this was lost in time, with these exceptions, but the exception part never happened, and that's all I'm saying. So I suggested one of the exceptions could be taking, I think, C three, which says the mitigation's supposed to, um, diminish the effect on your neighbor. Well, if there's no effect on the neighbor, why are you being required to do something? So flexibility, that's just, that's just the position I raised. Do what you do, but that's the issue I raised. That's it.
So I'm just, so, uh, for instance, if you have more parking in a row, you know, you may have less shaded parking, right? So a mitigation could be, you provide additional trees to shade more parking. So, and, and that may not affect, you know, the, because with multifamily, with multifamily, it's not the neighbors. It's also the community that is going to be benefiting from that development, right? In case of multifamily, we have, you know, it's hundreds of families that will be living there. So it's also to protect, you know, and to, so my issue, and I, we, staff uses common sense, right? We do not, you know, although some people may think that we want the money for the tree bank, and we want the mitigations. No, we want to provide good, good development, good design, right, to protect, you know, the residents. So, if you have no mitigation, it's also, uh, an incentive not to comply with the code, right?
To me, this is an issue of fairness of application of the code. We talked a lot about that with the trees. This is saying that if you're not meeting the code, but you're not affecting anyone subjectively, that you shouldn't have to mitigate for it. That's what I'm hearing. I mean, yeah, I see, believe it as is. Uh, they can still, if, if it's such a one-off case, bring it forward as an appeal to council, which is what we have right now.
But I, but I think we need to make sure that the mitigation prevents adverse impacts to adjacent land use activities, like it says there.
Right.
So, to, to, cause I saw this when I was on the LPA a few times, where, you know, it was.
Like you paid at the art board.
This was what they were deviating, but we said, put a tree over here, which had nothing to do with what they were deviating, you know? Because that was the mitigation, which to me was, was, you know.
Just a punishment.
Unrelated, yeah, it was a punishment. It was unrelated.
I get that too.
So, so we just need to make sure that if, if they got to mitigate, it's, it's to prevent the adverse effect of what they're mitigating.
It relates to the reduction of the code.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So do we need to then make sure that we add in the exceptions, or do we just need to add a one liner that says all mitigation will be directly related to reducing the impact of the immediate neighbors of the deviation? But it's not the neighbors, it's also the lot itself.
And the lot itself, yeah.
But they're supposed to be a list, right?
There's the lot or an adjacent neighbor.
Well, yeah, I was about to say that, in the list that we have below, I'm just gonna travel down, there is language that talks about this, I think.
The pick your poison language, right?
If an application, if, yeah, if an application requests multiple deviations, each deviation shall be evaluated independently, and mitigation shall be required for each requested deviation or a group of related deviations. And we're changing that word from group to category, but the point behind this is that sometimes a deviation is related to other deviations that happen. You know, for instance, if you reduce your parking stall size, uh, or, or if you're reducing the parking count and then it affects other things that happen, it might be a bad example. But anyway, if those deviations are related, then one deviation is required for those, that group of deviations. So this, I think is kind of addressed by that, but maybe not.
When possible, we always try to mitigate directly. There are things that you cannot mitigate directly, right?
Well, like, these, a lot of these things are just not totally related, like, well, I guess an EV station, maybe if you have extra pavement, then you might otherwise somehow that is related, but, uh, public art's always in there. And I think, well, if we're paying for public art somewhere other than on-site, then it's not really related.
I, I, I actually just thought of one that is always really, if you're deviating because you're not able to put a landscape, a terminal island in, then that's a landscape tree and the size of the term, the terminal island. And so those would be related, and you don't have to do one mitigation for that grouping. Just an example.
But then the mitigation could be paying into the public art fund, which is installed someplace miles from where the, the cause.
And that's how we have funded all the projects, most of the projects in the, in the public art program.
All right, so are we keeping it the way it is? All right, so what was the thing about the, the sidewalks?
There were, hold on, the second item was the cross, cross block passages? Page ninety-three.
So a cross block passage helps to create block sizes that are walkable. So you have a couple of different target areas that are fully vacant right now. And so why, the, the theory behind a cross block passage is if you're just doing an extremely long building or an extremely long block, and you don't have areas where a pedestrian can actually get through that block. So for instance, you have a parking scenario where you're parking behind the building, and you have to walk a half a mile around to the front entrances to that building.
Orange County Convention Center, has anybody ever walked around it?
Correct. So what we're trying to prevent is you having to walk an extraordinarily large walk to get around a building or around a block when you're trying to get to the other side of it. And so these distances are studied, and they, they align with industry standard for, um, where these, uh, are located on certain roads and their FDOT classifications and, and how, um, how far a pedestrian would be willing to walk in that scenario.
But how do you compensate the landowner for putting it in?
You have them design it to have either an undercut through the building, or that they lay out the blocks in such a way that it provides these pedestrian access points.
But you're requiring a, a landowner to, you're requiring a landowner to, to create a public space in the middle of their property?
No, it's just, it's providing pedestrian connection, so you, you, there are different ways.
That's just what he said.
No, sometimes it's for their own development, right?
It's to create good urban development.
But if it's for their own development, then, then.
They get to choose to do it.
They can choose to do it, but we're requiring to do it. I, I understand what you're saying about walking around.
Yeah, it's to create the block that is walkable. If we want to stimulate, you know, pedestrian, you know, um, pedestrianism, then we have to create something that is just the scale, right, of, of, uh, people walking.
Are we gonna require it for parking garages too? Like a four hundred foot cross?
Oh, definitely.
So you walk through the middle of the parking garage?
No, you just don't build that big of a parking garage. You situate the parking garage so that you can maintain a block size that's walkable.
This is another six.
I think, I think the issue is, I think the issue is.
Just adopted in Orange County, or it's about to be adopted in Orange County in Orange Code.
Is the placement of the public easement. I think that's the issue. If I, if I heard correctly, that was the issue.
Okay, well, just take out that it has to be in a public easement, or a, a tract that's dedicated.
Well, it's a or, right? In a public easement or public, publicly accessible track or provide for unrestricted public access.
So you do not have to put it in an easement or a tract if you leave it unlocked for people to access? But if, if we're on board with the idea that this needs to be walkable, I'm finding striking that, yeah, we can massage.
Yeah, that language, yeah.
What are we striking?
It's the last one. It's Roman numeral six.
We're striking all of Roman numeral si- six, so leaving that it still has to have no longer than a four hundred or six hundred foot.
So we're not taking their land or use, but they have to make sure people can walk across it, so it still gets the point. And we're all good with that? Yes.
I'm good with that.
Does that meet your issue? It does.
No. I like, I like everything about it. I love everything about it, but the lawyer in me.
No.
Okay, I won't.
So, I'll just say.
Do we have a consensus?
Yes.
And for the record, the lawyer in me looks at this and I, I see how this is problematic, so I'll leave that sitting there.
We're good.
But I like it.
The non-lawyer.
The next one.
I just want to make sure I understand, is the consensus to delete six? Or is the consensus leave it alone?
Delete it, but still required.
Delete six.
Got it.
Still allowed.
Okay.
So if we're allowed to regulate things like setbacks and everything else, I think we can regulate how long a wall can be. So we can just, we simply can say, you may not have walls longer than four hundred feet. So I think the issue is the six. But then you just have people walking through private property without permission. Yes, so I think the issue is six, so people, people walk through there anyway, but maybe they can make people feel uncomfortable or unwelcome or something. And that relieves, that from a legal. from a legal perspective, I look at that and think, okay, well, they can make them feel unwelcome, and people will do what they do. But then we don't have a problem where we have.
Can we, can we make a decision?
Yeah.
Yeah. Do we have consensus?
There's consensus, I guess. Okay.
Consensus.
It's still problematic.
Yep.
Yeah. But taking out, we took out six, right?
Yeah.
Okay. It's much less problematic with that.
All right. So now, to the sidewalks, the crosswalks.
So we have placed specific streetscape requirements for the major roadways that are lining or internal to all of the target areas. Specifically, the ones that I've heard issues with are within the downtown core and Central Avenue. The goal of an urban streetscape is to provide a better pedestrian and cycling experience. We've been hired to urbanize these target areas. This is a major component of making these places feel walkable, feel safe to be on foot and not in a car. It is a fundamental tool in planning to require specific streetscapes to create an urban form. The idea that you could only apply these regulations to a site that's five acres or more defeats the purpose of it, because you're trying to create a continuous streetscape and connectivity. And you're not going to get that if you apply this to larger lots and not all of the lots. We, can I say one more thing?
Yeah, yeah.
Per our last LDCC meeting last week, we talked about looking at sites that have had significant public improvements within the last X amount of years, that we wouldn't require you to like rip up that sidewalk that was just redone and redo it. So having some sort of mitigation strategy for that. Again, the mitigation and deviation applies to this as well. So if it cannot be accommodated for whatever existing conditions are there, staff is going to work with that applicant to make it work. I, I've heard a lot from Mr. Axel about how this affects small property owners. We're talking about along Central Avenue, not in DC, but we're talking about like five or six feet. The current setbacks along Central Avenue are 25 feet.
That's what I was going to bring up.
And we're reducing them to zero or 15. And so that's measured from the back of where the streetscape required. They're basically going to earn land back for buildability with what we're proposing along Central Avenue.
But then they have to use, you know, 16 to 20 feet of it for this? Am I understanding correctly?
So this isn't, what's showing on the screen right now is for the downtown core along Central Avenue in the CA zoning district. It's a seven foot, seven foot, will you go to CA, just so I make sure I'm saying the right numbers?
But this is the same area where we have a 25-foot buffer. And now we're essentially eliminating that buffer and putting in 20 feet of streetscape. Is that correct?
No.
Okay. So I'm missing.
So Central Avenue streetscape is a 15-foot streetscape, and it's from the back of the curb. So we're asking for an eight-foot wide sidewalk, and then a seven-foot tree planting zone. And so the sidewalk here, we talked about possibly reducing to six feet, but the seven-foot tree planting zone, in order to not have to do a root barrier, you need seven feet. So these can be flip-flopped based on existing conditions. But, but what you're trying to do is create a street that has street trees that provide shade to pedestrians so that you're getting people walking along this area. So 15 feet from back of curb probably has about seven or eight feet to where the property line starts, so that next area will likely fall on private property, which is what I believe Mr. Axel has an issue with, is that we're asking for that property to be either dedicated or in an easement, because the city will take over the maintenance of that. This is, this is common in every municipality I've ever worked in. I'll just say that.
I feel like I'm missing the issue with it right now.
For downtown core, it's a bit more specific. And I will say, I modeled these dimensions off of what Mr. Axel is proposing in the downtown core.
Okay.
And he wants it to be optional, and that's a valid opinion.
It's like too much right-of-way, is basically what he's saying.
Correct. So, so what we are talking about here is there will be some pedestrian realm located on private properties.
But in exchange for that, we are also proposing, so we're not taking it exactly, we are giving people the right to occupy it. Well, now, I guess we are taking it back, then.
But, but you're giving them additional entitlements in these target areas to build more densely, to build more units, to build more square footage of commercial.
And less setbacks.
And less setbacks.
Okay. And it's also, okay, so then the caveat here too is, if there's not a right-of-way now, they have to put it in an easement to make it.
Correct.
Okay.
The only thing we have to be concerned with, and he's raised issues, is it's, it's a taking. I mean, in takings, you know, you have to compensate the property owner.
I think that is a valid point.
It's a valid point.
There should be some sort of mitigation in the form of impact fees. And we talked about that at the LDCC as well.
They would be entitled to.
If increased capacity, you know, then it will be eligible for impact fees.
So if you're sending the right-of-way out more.
If, if, if it's sidewalks, if it's, you know, would be mobility.
Seems fair.
Impact fees.
And what, Mr. Axel?
And that is also standard across many municipalities.
The new legislation does reinforce that.
So with a mobility fee, like you would pay X amount to create this space anyway. So if you create the space in the process of redevelopment.
It takes away the need to pay in.
Yeah, so then you're not paying it. So as long as we're making it fair with money.
Entitled compensation by some means.
But there, there may be situations, because Katie talked about flipping, right?
Well.
So you, ideally, it would be the street, the furnishing zone, and the sidewalk, because the sidewalk is protected. But we may have to flip to have the sidewalk and the furnishing zone using part of the setback.
And, and the reason that there's that flexibility, and that would be through your deviation process, is really for existing sites. So again, if there's been major public improvements, and there's a new six-foot sidewalk that's been installed, we should not be requiring that developer to rip that up and plant, or, and do two additional feet of sidewalk when it's just been invested in. And that language is not in here, because we just talked about that last week. But I do think that that could help with the small lots that Mr. Axel's talking about, to point out that the deviation process would allow for accommodating existing situations where there's been public improvement.
Okay, so that can be added.
Certainly.
Okay.
We'll work with staff on the language for that.
Okay. We good? All right. Was there anything else?
I think there probably is, but maybe we should try it another day.
I think that was from the list. Now, now you've got.
I will say, well, do you want, I don't know, who wants to go first?
Go, go for it.
Go for it.
I met with staff for like three and a half hours today, and knocked out most of this. So, but I do think there's some things that we should mention that I like commented on in case they change them. So 181 is not really a comment, it's just that I haven't really seen this. It's a section 9.6. It's in the old code, so it's not changed. But it says we should get a presentation every year on our level of services for our roads and everything. So just, thought I'd put that reminder in there, that I have not seen that every year. Page 198.
Is that the gray number, 198?
198, the number at the bottom. So I don't know what section is.
Yeah, I can find it by 198.
We're talking bicycle lanes.
Okay.
Were we going 198?
Got it. Yes, 198. That does not look like, oh, yeah, scroll down. Okay. So at the bottom here, we've talked a lot about bicycle lanes, and I am a big advocate for not putting them in the road. So I just want to make sure what we put in here is still in line with Vision Zero that we just went over, and we incorporated all that. So I know less than 25 miles per hour on the next page, they can be shared with the road, and I'm okay with that. And then greater.
It's going to be bicycle lane between 25 and 35.
Say that again?
Between 35, 25 and 35, it's going to be bicycle lane.
Yeah, so 25 to 35, you can have a bicycle lane. I just want to make sure we're still putting it up out of traffic, or putting some kind of bollard safety system, even at that level. So I don't know if there's consensus to do that. I know it says if it's above 35 mile per hour, if you have that in there.
That's when it's required per the language right now.
But I just want to make sure, I mean, if that's what Vision Zero has in there, I'm good. I just want to confirm that's what we're doing here.
And bikes are always allowed to, if they feel like the, if you feel like the lane is too narrow, or people, yeah, you can go on the road.
I just want to make sure we're putting in a safe option in our code now, because this is when you do it.
Yeah, so if you're looking at C right now, it does not require that it's separated. Is that correct? It's, it can be a lane that's.
Bicycle lane.
But adjacent to a travel lane without a separation.
The same level, just marked, yeah.
So like, I would never ride in that lane. I would ride in the road, because nobody ever.
There needs to be some sort of barrier.
I mean, the consultant would be supportive of adding a barrier.
So I just wanted to add a barrier there, because we've talked about it for two years straight.
Even if it's a, even if it's a non.
I mean, you're adding costs.
Yeah.
As long as we're all aware of that.
So you're dropping, so you, you're removing the bicycle lane option. It's either, either sharing or putting.
No, you can have a bicycle lane in the next section, but it has to at least have, it's in here somewhere.
It's a bicycle path, that we call.
No, no, no.
But it says bollards or.
It'll be a protected bike lane, is what we'll call it. And I'll work with Evan in our office. And there's multiple options. You can have.
It says it in E on there. It has it.
We have that option, but it's above.
Shared-use path or a physical barrier, which may consist of tubular markers, traffic separators. So there are some options, but maybe, can we look into that to make it more safe, is what I'm asking.
Yeah. So, so here's a difference, though, between shared-use paths. Shared-use path has to be 10 feet. And it, so what we're talking about is a protected bike lane. So it has the physical barriers of what we're talking about in a shared-use path, but it's applied to the width of a single.
Understood.
One-way bicycle lane.
So can we add that to the 25 to 35 mile per hour?
Yes. And I, I'll work with our transportation planner to do that.
Yes.
Okay, awesome.
I think that was a good thing to fix. Okay, 220. We knocked out almost, mostly these, so bear with me.
I think we need to include this one.
I guess this is more a goal question here. So we added in that we don't allow rubber mulch and similar non-natural materials for mulching, and like, I don't have a problem with that. But then right underneath in G, we allow artificial turf, which is counteracted.
Rubber mulch.
It's a rubber mulch turf field, which again, I don't have a problem with it. But then in G3, it gets even more weird. Artificial turf is considered an impervious surface, even though it's pervious, which, okay, if something is blue, we're going to say it's red because we don't like it. I just don't like how this whole section kind of contradicts itself. I don't really have a problem with any of it. I just want some justification here.
So in, in terms of the Florida-friendly landscape, unfortunately, artificial turf is considered an impervious surface and not a Florida-friendly material.
Sure.
And so that's where we got this language.
So this is all for the purpose of making things Florida-friendly, which is fine.
All for the purpose of making things more Florida-friendly, but also getting a landscape that works, right? And so we didn't want to, we didn't want to just eliminate artificial turf entirely. It just didn't make sense to us in a professional world.
And I follow the questionnaire. So I'm good with that. I just want to make sure I got the background here. But if we're saying it's impervious here, we're still counting it as pervious for stormwater calculations on everything else, which is, I think, what I asked staff, because water's still going through it as far as engineering calculations.
So that's completely dependent upon how it's installed. And that's why we took the default position here that it is an impervious surface, because if you're actually installing it for longevity, you're putting it on a compacted crusher base, and that's not considered a pervious surface.
I don't know that I like that. If it rains and the water goes through it and not around it.
Well, then it goes, there's drainage underneath.
Yeah.
And it continues to get less pervious over time.
It does continue to get less pervious over time, too.
Fair enough.
Why, why no rubber mulch, though?
It's terrible.
Was that it?
I mean, it's not good.
It floods.
Were there any others?
It floods. Yes, I do have others. We hit that one already.
I think we're getting us on track.
I'm trying to.
I think you forgot the ones.
No.
I think you forgot it existed. Thanks for reminding.
I was kind of hoping for, you know, one.
We're hoping just to have one.
232?
I'll let you do it at the end of the meeting.
This should be a quick one, as long as we're on board. I just wanted to say, I suggested getting rid of the distance requirements on cart corral spacings, because we don't have that currently.
And we just got feedback to get rid of that entire section, so.
And that's from talking. I just wanted to make sure council knows I, I talked about that, and we thought it was.
Well, this is not something we want to regulate, right? We do no one.
It's just to prevent.
Have deviations.
Cars all over parking lots.
No, we're, we're good.
Okay. All right. And then 235. Again, this is just something I pointed out, so it's not necessarily a change, but I had it kind of in there backwards, where parking had to be close in the park, target areas, and then far away citywide, where it's, it's just backwards and needs to be fixed. So I just wanted to point that out, that I brought that up.
This is on our list.
Okay. 237. Okay, so I don't know if there's a fix here. So this is talking about stacking with drive-throughs. So my example was Starbucks in Oviedo on the Park, that it backs up and gets onto the main street there. So right here, we're saying you have to do a study to make sure you grab all of the stacking. But I didn't know if there's a way to say that the stacking had to start and end within the property. So if it did overflow, it's not getting into street traffic. So I don't know if there's a way to put that in there.
I think that that's what it does say. And then the, the star here is, is allowing for some sort of leeway. I, I can talk to our transportation planner and see if.
I guess, I guess.
He advises getting rid of it.
If it would fix the issue we have right now, then I'm good with it. I just want to make sure, like, because we have a case right now where it overflows, and then it blocks the road.
The request is that the, I guess, is the, is the request that the stacking be onsite?
The stacking is fully captured onsite.
Completely.
I support that idea. Question, because this is numerical, can somebody ask for a deviation?
We should cap the deviation.
It will not grant.
I mean. And, and we always approve deviations. So I'm just saying, we, we need to be careful of pushing them that way.
If it doesn't make sense, we would say no.
If you state that the stacking has to be onsite, then it would.
Period.
It would be prohibited to go off.
It's not numerical.
Okay. I'll bring that back to our transportation planner.
Well, and to this, this point, if we flipped it to what I said, and it's all onsite, then you'd have to enter from the other direction on Starbucks, and then it would back up and cover the whole plaza. So there's no good solution there. So it shouldn't be deviated, and it shouldn't be allowed.
What's the definition of stacking? Is it stacking from the, the box, or?
From the window, from the window.
From the window.
Until the law.
Until. Intrusive thought, I'm sorry.
Okay, so.
Okay, 239.
239.
Yeah, we're getting there, I promise. Okay, this table, I'm just going to say, looked ridiculous. And there's a lot of things that I think need to be fixed on these biking requirements. And I know staff said they wanted to look at this more.
We already requested that to be removed.
So I just wanted to put out there that I flagged that as well. And as far as bike racks, on the next page, 240, is there a reason we only allow two types of bike racks, just out of curiosity?
We, I, I think we talked.
I'll speak for Eliza and say, she cycles everywhere, and she gets so frustrated when people install innovative bike racks, and they do it incorrectly.
And they don't function well.
And they don't function well, and they don't hold as many bikes as they should. So simplify it. These are easy to install. I mean, it's up to you all.
They could be very cool artistic things. I think we should.
Should we add a caveat for that?
Yes.
If I could, this is not, this is not taken out of a catalog. This is a type. This is an inverted U-type, okay?
Sure.
There is a lot of flexibility in terms of how that inverted U is applied, right? The artistic ones that are adjacent to the airport, the, what's the airport name? The small airport with the.
Executive.
The executive airport. Those are legitimately inverted U's. They're cool.
I just, I mean, I know the local schools have different ones than these that work really well. So I just know there's other options. I don't want to like eliminate options that work, but I totally want to get rid of options that don't. So.
Yeah, we can look at this.
There's more to throw in there. I would like that. Okay, 262. This one's a little funny. I think it's an error. The menu boards. So I've never been to a McDonald's where the menu is this big. So I just don't understand this requirement where the maximum height So I just don't understand this requirement where the maximum height is eight feet. And if that's the case, then the sign can only be half a foot wide.
This will be revised.
This has already been updated.
Okay, we're good. We fixed it. Two sixty-eight. And I think that's my last one I have on here. Okay, so this whole section, we have seventeen days for temporary signs, which I now understand did have a background, if someone didn't just pick their favorite number, that it's two weeks and like a weekend to put up a temporary sign. But I feel like for simplicity, it should be thirty days or sixty days for putting up like a temporary sales sign. And my argument for this too is when the city does an event, they don't go through this process and they do temporary signs way longer than this. So like if a HOA wanted to do like a community sales event or something, they can only say it's happening for two weeks versus like a month. So it's all over this whole category.
Well, that, that, the seventeen days is three weekends, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So if you think of that, that's fine. I decided to short.
Yeah, I, I do think that's adequate.
That was, that was the rationale, was three weekends.
Yeah, that's pretty temporary.
That's it?
All right.
I just got one.
Okay.
And there, there's lots of things where I could go off on a tangent, but ADU, that is the hill I think is worth, worth spending some time on.
I'm sorry, ma'am, just seventeen is good, is not good? We didn't know.
I think seventeen is good.
Sounds like they want to stick seventeen.
Yeah, I think so. There's a, there's a method to the madness and I think it makes sense.
Thank you, sorry.
On ADUs, there, there are some architectural standards in there that I think are unnecessarily